The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call the special board meeting to order that entertain the first motion.
I move that the resignations as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the retirements as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Carried 7-0.
I move that the employment of John Kasha as financial consultant, six months at the district office building at .6 full-time equivalent, had a salary of $55,899.97 effective July 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019 as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the transfers of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the transfer of Jacqueline Hauser, principal at Franklin Middle School, 12 months, to associate director of special education, 12 months, at a salary in the group 9, 100 percentile, effective July 1st, 2019 as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
McCoy?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
I'm just wanted to say that I'm really sad to lose her as my daughter's principal, but I will vote yes, aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
She's staying with the district, so that's good. I move that Frank Ozisey Construction be awarded the bid for renovation project work at Martin Elementary School in the amount not to exceed $6,740,000 as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that Frank Ozisey Construction be awarded the bid for community space renovation work at East High School in the amount of $402,434 as presented be approved.
Second.
Where is, I'm going to ask a question, where is that the space that's being renovated specifically?
If Mike could come up, but I believe it's right when you come in, the old front door. So it's...
The old front door?
Well, it's not, it's in the middle of the building.
Oh, the middle of the buildings.
The middle of the building when you come in from the parking lot.
Right, it's, it's the old, the original main, um, main office. So you could go in the center doorway where the statues are above, it's to the right between there and the gym.
And by the picnic tables.
Same with that, is it going to be, what is used in this space going to be?
It's going to be community space, so there's going to be a community room which also will be their career center, um, a room for dental health, mental health, um, another office for community space, and then a room that can be used as a small clinic-type room.
What's that space going to be used for now?
Um, there's a business, um, a store, a school store which will be located to a conference room area, which will be remodeled to be more centrally located, and then it's, um, a class, two classrooms that will be relocated.
Thanks. Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Vanenhoof?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the board contract with Drew Hoick, Hoick Associates, to provide facilitation services for three board retreats.
A point of order, since we postponed a motion that, did we postpone a motion that was in progress to today, or did we wipe it out and just postpone the topic?
We tabled the motion.
We tabled the motion to today.
Okay.
So Melissa, we need to make the motion again to proceed.
Yeah, okay, so is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we had a lot of talk about this last time, I guess I just open it up to any new information that people want to bring, I know Christina and Rhonda both provided names of other people that could do this kind of work.
I actually have a question about that. When were the attachments for the additional facilitators aside from Mr. Hoick added, because they were not there last night?
They were added this morning.
Okay, so they haven't been posted publicly until today?
Correct, but you've had them for a couple of weeks.
Okay, but the public only would have had them since what time, today, did they get posted?
Ten, nine, ten.
Okay, and is there a reason why they weren't posted with the other facilitator on Friday when we received our agenda?
No intentional reason.
Okay, so just to go back and refresh everyone's memory, at our last conversation, there was a conversation at length about additional facilitators considering that, and we discussed, I guess, what we were possibly looking at doing as far as a conversation on that, and we were also asked, I know Melissa came up to the podium and had asked if we would, if we wanted to add consideration to this, this agenda item for consideration of hiring a facilitator, that we would actually have to submit our, our choices by Friday the 26th, so our meeting was on the 22nd, the 26th we actually were asked to submit that by Friday, and which I submitted to by Friday, worked pretty heavily that week, and still made the time to make the phone calls and get that information sent over. I'm not going to speak for Christina, but I know that she also did as well, and we were told to actually have that in by Friday the 26th. I was assuming that it would be added to the agenda for today's meeting, and it was not, it wasn't even last night at 6:00 PM, and what that means to me personally is that I'm considering taking action on something that the public hasn't been noticed properly of.
Right, although, I mean, the board is, is taking the action, and the board has had the information since...
But the board isn't paying for it, okay, so let's be clear on that, so the board is not paying for the facilitator, it's the public that is paying for it, so I believe that we need to be transparent in the first place, this was not noticed publicly properly either in, in regards to taking action on it, I, in good faith and ethically couldn't do that, because I would never want... No, it wasn't, I've been looking at this agenda since Friday, and it wasn't on there.
The agenda item, the motion is noticed.
Yep.
You need to give the public proper notice as to what action that the board would take, so the, the motion was posted correctly and the, and proper notice has been met per Wisconsin Open Meeting Session.
Yep, that's not what I'm referring to, though.
I, I just want to clarify one thing, I did, I did not give a date when I came forward as to when things, I, I simply offered a process so that we were compliant with open meetings, that if you had other individuals submit that to Sandy, and Sandy would then send that out to the board, so that we were not violating open meetings with a walking
The date was actually given as Friday.
I did not offer a date as to when things needed to be submitted.
What do we do in the midterm, in the interim, what are we doing, are we sending suggestions? Are we prioritizing an email, and what's, yeah, what's the plan?
I'm not quite sure what the purpose of this conversation is.
This is refreshing us back to the 22nd.
Right, but I, what's your goal and your...
Listen, you already discussed this at, at an open session, and this, I would strongly caution against emailing about this because you're going to create a, create a walking forum, so if you have suggested candidates, I think I would send them to Sandy, and Sandy can then send them out to the entire board, so that you're not creating a walking forum and violating open meetings rules. Love it.
And that was followed by discussion of have it to Sandy by Friday, so we did, we followed the process, and we did what we were asked to do, and that information was not put into the agenda, and I'm still not sure why.
You mean into Neptune?
The public agenda, the same, the same agenda that we're looking at, that the public has noticed about on Fridays, the same agenda that Mr. Hoick has noticed, his document was in there noticed, that same agenda.
Yeah, and again, it was not an intentional thing, I mean, I, I, we provided the information to all the board members, and, and it, it, I just, I just didn't think of putting it on Neptune, because I felt like the, the board had the information for enough time.
But, but I think it's important to recognize, it's important to recognize that the public deserves the information that we're going to consider spending money on when it comes to hiring a board facilitator, this is something that they deserve, they have Mr. Hoicks, if we're going to be considering other potential candidates, the public should have, is, should have more than 15 minutes to look at that, and, and I personally cannot look at someone in the face and say, "I took your tax dollars to hire a facilitator, and you were given 15 minutes to look at who I, you know, decided to have do that job." I, I'm sorry, but that, we, both of us got that information to you on the 26th, today is, is May 6th. If it's not intentional, then, then it's an afterthought, which is actually possibly worse, that we took the time to get our information to you for consideration, we spent so much time talking about consideration of additional facilitators, we did, we did spend a lot of time on that, and the reason being was because we wanted to submit that and, and go through the process, this is an 11th hour admission, I've never actually gotten really angry at this board table, but this is, this is about, this is ridiculous.
All right, so I've admitted I made a mistake, and I think that at this point, we're not going to accomplish anything by rehashing that, so I think at this point, we need to make a decision moving forward about what, what the motion is that, that, I mean, we have a tabled motion here, what the motion that the board members would like to see.
I could, I don't know if it would be fair to say that I want to bring in a board consultant more than anybody else, I don't think that's fair to the rest of you, but I want to very, very badly bring in a board consultant, I, I do want to try to understand what the purpose is, why, why are we bringing in a board consultant, I've heard some different things, and I think I know the answer, but I'm also new, so I want to make sure that, that we all have, you know, the same idea, and two reasons for that, one, if we're going to bring in a board consultant, I want to make sure that we all know what we're trying to get out of that, because if all seven of us are going to be there and try to accomplish a goal, I want to make sure we know what that is going in, so if, if that's something that we can come to a consensus on today, I think that would be helpful, but I do think I want the public to know what we're trying to work on too, and why we're choosing to spend this money, I, I don't think that it's a, a work session, I think it's growth and development, personally, I think it's important that we do this right and not quickly, and I think that we're already behind in terms of starting the process for our next superintendent search, and I view this as a critical component to that, what I would be leaning towards, I, I think Mr. Hoick is incredibly qualified, has great references, and I, I think it would be great to work with him, there's another name on this list personally who I think could also be very strong, you know, what I would maybe like to see is in the next week or two, if we can do some kind of a interview process, can we get two people in front of us, give them what our defined purpose is, and let them give us a proposal, or answer some questions for us, and allow us to make a decision more than just on, on what we have on paper, but what, what we see, because bringing this person in is tremendously important to the future of our board, to how we work together, and how attractive we are to the next superintendent candidate, and so I, I think that would be a, a fair process to, to give consideration to, you know, at least to, I don't, I don't, I don't, that's just my thought, and again, Mr. Hoick is incredibly qualified, and if we end up going with him, great.
Christina? Yep, thank you, so two quick things before I kind of get into and respond to Eric, because I think he brings up a lot of good points, one is, the information that's on Neptune is not the information, and it's, I wasn't clear in my email with you, Sandy, Beverly Scow actually had emailed me, and I just emailed you the updated information, the cost amount for the different specific workshops that she had quoted us, so I will get that to you guys, the other thing that I wanted to share is, to your exact point, is I actually emailed to Sandy today, I think there's seven guiding questions for me, I think in clarity and transparency, it's important, so I'm going to share that with every board member, because I think it's important for us to come with our own guiding questions and considerations, so that we can get to exactly what you're talking about, so I did spend some time today on that, and that does include considerations of what makes up a high-functioning board, what will make us more effective, looking at the superintendent evaluation, how do we source candidates and onboard them, thank you Sandy, I'm going to pass this to, for everyone, and I want to thank Beverly Scow for working with me, as Rhonda said, it, it was difficult to get a turnaround quickly, and I appreciate her hard work on this, she had a conversation with me, I, I directed her to the open meeting from the last board meeting, I encouraged her to watch that, so that she could craft some suggestions for us, I think, for me, it is troublesome, and I'll continue to use that word, that over the weekend, this information was not on here, especially because the conversation two weeks ago was pretty clear and robust about what the board was looking for, and whether the intention was to cause harm or not, intention doesn't matter, it's the impact, and the impact makes it come, for me personally, as an independent school board member who's been elected, it felt like the work that I had done, had done was dismissed, again, whether it was intentional or not, it doesn't matter, it felt that way to me, and, and I want to apologize to Beverly Scow tonight for, you know, not allowing the community to see her work over the weekend, in the, you know, for transparency. I don't have anything against Mr. Hoick, or who Brenda had put forward, it's nothing personal, I simply want us to be able to make a decision, so that we want exactly, as Eric said, know what, why we're doing it, and then we can choose the best person, but again, I still don't know what anyone's priorities are sitting up on this board, I still don't know exactly what you want to get out of this, and I would be interested in learning more about that, but I think that the documentation that I shared with you gives you a snippet of where I'm coming from and what I'm looking for.
Shell?
Just for future reference, and not necessarily related to this, sometimes we do have misses, just Sandy and I have missed placing items, and we have put things up there on Saturdays, so in the future, if there are other things that you know should be on there, or you're questioning, feel free to, to let me know, I don't, I don't know what was behind why this wasn't there, but I can speak to the fact that we have posted some things on Saturdays because it was a mistake, so I, I just put that out there for the board to know for the future, because our responsibility is to get what you need out there to the public, so, thank you.
To be clear, this was not posted Saturday, it wasn't even posted in time for the board meeting, the 24-hour notice that is required, so it was posted today, and I've been watching, I've been watching this, the reality is, it wasn't posted when, when everyone else's was, we put it in in time, it's there now, but the reality is, I wouldn't expect, if someone else did something like this, even if it's something I support, I, it, it's not ethically right to go ahead and vote on something, first of all, I'm not sure how we're going to, I'm not sure how we're going to create the perfect criteria for a facilitator that we want, if we don't have our priorities laid out first, right, you're not going to hire a contractor if you haven't actually drawn the plans out of your house, you're not going to do that, nobody in this room would do that, so I'm not entirely sure how we choose out of four facilitators, if we don't really know what our priorities are coming in, we know what maybe one, two, or three people's priorities are, but that hasn't even been publicly noticed, it's just been discussed amongst somebody somewhere, so I believe if we're going to do this right, we need to make sure we put forward our priorities first, get those in order, and then we could choose a facilitator, or two.
Right, I just, a question, when we talk about priorities, are you meaning, like, what I'm interested in and want to try to help the district, or my priorities for getting out of that session, or getting out of a work session?
I would imagine they're probably pretty close to the same things.
Well, for, for me, they're very different, so if, if we bring in a consultant, my priorities for those sessions are different than what are, what are my personal interests or priorities for the district, I think that the seven of us could get in a room and talk about the things, a couple of things that we're passionate about, and we could, you know, put those up on a board, and kind of come to some consensus, we could do that, we don't need a consultant, to me, the, what are my priorities are for a session is for our board to grow and develop, and to figure out who we are going to be, how we're going to interact, what are some, you know, rules on how we're going to communicate and work with the administrative team, those are my priorities for a work session, and, and maybe in that session, we do the, the school district priorities, but to me, those are two separate things.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what you're...
I hear you, so let's, let's go with that, right, even in, in regards to that, we don't really have those laid out, so we haven't discussed that as well, so how can we really look at four facilitators and actually, in good faith, do that, I don't know how we can do that.
I talked about this two weeks ago, and we haven't gotten nowhere, so I'm not really sure how we are going to be efficient as a board, when, I literally said this two weeks ago, like, can we identify what we want to get out of this, which is why I brought this, so I'd be, I'd love to know what we are going to do to move this forward, so that we can make a decision, because I, like, I would love to hear what other people want to get out of these sessions, because I tried to do exactly like what you're saying, Eric, think about like from a facilitator, what I would love to, for us to get in a room and do, that's why I included things like what makes a high-functioning board, how do we have transparency and communications with an open meetings laws, because I was thinking of Melissa, like how to, whereas, what are some best practices, so.
Can I just clarify, the, the message that my statement that Rhonda played back, again, I, I, because I feel like I'm now being called a liar at this meeting, and my reputation is of paramount importance as a legal counsel, I, I still didn't, I still did not hear in that recording, because I, I think the insinuation is that I gave a deadline, and I still did not hear in that recording.
I didn't say you gave a deadline, the deadline was...
You did, you, you did.
The deadline was Friday.
But, but I did not set the deadline.
No, but you, you told us what we could do in the process.
The process to get it to Sandy, I just, I just...
Didn't call you a liar.
Okay, because I, I...
Nope, but you're taking it personally, I didn't do that.
No, I'm not taking it personally, I just want the, to clarify the purpose of playing that message back.
The purpose of playing that is to make sure that people understood the conversation happened, and that we actually were asked to, to use our consideration for who else we'd maybe like to see, and that we were asked to give the paperwork to Sandy by Friday, and that's what, and we complied, that's the point.
I don't know where the Friday deadline came, it was not from...
We can go back to YouTube and find...
I think it was just, we just, as a board said, by Friday at the end of the day.
Right.
Thank you, just, just so it's clarified, I did not set that deadline.
And the point with the being, and the point with that is saying that that was on the 26th of April, that is not an attack on you at all, that is just to lay out some things, trying to understand why it evaporated into thin air in the first place, that's all that was.
Christina, I like a lot of the points that you've put on here, I would agree with some of them.
Thank you.
I would maybe add, how do we make sure board meetings don't go till 11 o'clock at night?
Yeah, exactly.
How do we, how do we be more efficient, and how do we work together, again, I think a lot of it goes back to our administrative team, so that we don't have a, a presentation at 10 o'clock at night from teachers and principals who have been working since 7:00 AM and are going back to work in a few hours, along with many of our board members here, you know, how, how can we run meetings, so that we're not doing that to our staff?
And I'm glad you brought that up too, because I meant to add that in here around committee work, improving the functionality of committee work, to support it, so when it comes to the table, like, exactly like you're saying, some of us have already participated, and we can guide that conversation.
And, and again, I think that Drew Hoick could do a lot of these things. So, it seems, it seems to me to make, it makes sense to do some, maybe we put together some kind of a process to talk to facilitators, and maybe make the decision on this in, in two weeks, I don't, I don't know that I, I mean, I, I think you can offer other ideas and amendments to a motion if the, if the topic is noticed, but that's also something I don't want to do if, if others don't want to do it, even if, even if it's only one board member that doesn't want to do it, I, I would rather, I would rather wait, move this forward to, to the 20th, especially if we, but with some ground rules about, okay, so between now and the 20th, we are going to do, what, is it get more ideas, and then ask facilitators to respond to a list of questions, or get additional ideas, and then have a subset of the board interview facilitator candidates by phone, I think there is a, I think we want to do it sooner rather than later, but I would, I would hate to see this decision come through on a, with unanswered questions by board members tonight, I, I think that would start the process off on the wrong foot for whatever facilitator or facilitators were chosen, I think a facilitator is a good idea, my, I don't think it's something that should be done every year, but it's been several years since we've had an outside facilitator, for me, my, my priority is, and the question that I would want to have answered is I would want to make sure that a facilitator was not, was not coming in to, to attempt to sell the board on one particular governance model, it, it is valid that different board members may have different philosophies about hands-on, hands-off, as I usually call it, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know enough to say that I like, I like one better than the other, but I think the idea of some kind of a process between now and the 20th, and then deciding once and for all is a, seems a good idea to me.
I do think our initial need for a facilitator, if I had to prioritize things, is we, as a board, have to collectively get our act together, we are perceived as dysfunctional, and it may not be the intent, but, I mean, you talk about your newness on the board, I can talk about my oldness on the board, and it has really taken a bit of a hit, and it's, it's not ideology, it's delivery, and a case in point, and you, and I believe you when you say you didn't mean to attack Melissa, but I also believe Melissa, when I hear her saying she felt attacked, because that's kind of how it came across, especially playing the, the, the recording of her voice, and I, and I think those are the kinds of things, we need a makeover, we need to learn to work well together, we need to learn to disagree in a civil manner, and we need to be able to function as a board to lead this district, and we've got to get it together, or we're not going to attract anyone as a candidate for superintendent.
Can I say, though, if... Can I say though, if none of that conversation would have taken place today, had the information that we took time out of our very busy lives to give 10 days before this meeting, and we followed the process, and we complied with what we were asked to do, and then somehow, magically, it shows up today? That is not, that's actually not being even, we're not giving the public any sort of honor as well.
That was admitted as an error, and in defense, too, people did reach out to some of the recommended people and have not gotten a call back.
Okay.
So I mean-
Christine, I, you had your moment.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for everyone at this table to take responsibility for what you have done and what you haven't done. I mean, collectively, we are a board, and no one is perfect, and we're going to make mistakes. But I think you're exactly right, we have to get our act together, but that means owning the ways that we can improve.
Right.
And, you know, just as maybe Rhonda's intent wasn't to make, you know, what, you know, the, also, it wasn't the intent for the thing, but it still came across that way. So we have to be able to own that, but what I keep seeing, what is, again, troubling, I'm gonna continue to use that, is we keep having the same conversations over and over, and I do feel that some of the leadership decisions that are being made prior to or at this board table, or most of it prior to, such as this contract, set us up to not be successful. And those are the systems and structures that I continue to talk about, that we can do a better job of, but we just continue to just do the same thing over and over again. I'm feeling like I'm knocking my head against the wall, and the same feeling over and over. And I'd like us to do things differently, and it was very frustrating when, over the weekend, that, the person I had worked wasn't on the agenda, right? And so it just feels like we're doing the same thing over and over. So believe me, I totally agree with you, I think we need to do that, but I don't see us doing anything differently. We're having the same conversation over and over again.
But that's why we bring a facilitator in, to-
Agree, but even that decision-
To change our evil ways.
Right, but even that decision feels like we're not, we really don't include everyone's voice. Again, I know it wasn't the intent, but it feels that way, and that's not a good place to start. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
And it's also, you know, you're always told consistently, don't micromanage, don't, you know, just lay off and, and, okay, well, that's what I did. I didn't see it on Friday, I'm like, it's gotta appear at some point. I can't imagine why it wouldn't. You know, at some point, I just, I wanna see what people are made of, and, but the bottom line is, I can't vote on a facilitator that the public hasn't had their due diligence as far as, I can say with, with straight to someone's face, you had this much time to look at that.
Thanks, that's-
Yep.
We've heard that loud and clear.
Good.
Is there anybody else that would-
I actually have a question.
Yep.
Can we vote, how do we vote on these? These are bios, these aren't like contracts with dollars on, in, like, proposals, how do you vote on that?
Well, we would just vote to, to negotiate and-
Okay, so that would be a vote?
Draw up a contract, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That we would move, I mean, we can vote on whatever the motion that's put forward, but it would be, that we would hire a consultant to come work with us, and then that would be understood that it would be a contract.
Okay, so we could vote then tonight to select two, how do you see this moving forward? If we were to say, well, we would like to consider two or three of these? You'd have to amend the motion?
Yeah, you'd have to make, yeah, amend the motion.
Okay. And then walk me through the rest of how that looks, please?
You'd put forth an amendment, what you'd like to vote on-
Okay.
As an amended motion, and we would vote on the amendment.
Just for, just to then draft the contract?
Go ahead, Melissa, she's shaking her head.
Sorry, Melissa, thank you, I'm just trying to understand how this goes forward.
I mean, we technically don't have to vote if we can come to consensus, cause we're not, if we, if we can just come to a consensus on who we, who we wanna consider, we don't have to vote.
Okay.
The current motion on the table is to award the con, award or contract with Drew Hoick.
Right.
Right.
If you don't want to award that right now, you could just leave that go and table it again, come to a consensus at what you're going, you don't have to pass a motion to bring in two people or three people to interview, you can decide that, and we can put that on a next board agenda, that doesn't have to have an action item.
Okay.
And then, but if you want to award a contract or contract with somebody, then you're gonna have to either defeat this motion or amend this motion to award it to somebody else.
What if you wanted to do a hybrid, Melissa? So you would do Drew Hoick as a first, the first motion, and then you would just put forth a second motion? How does-
We don't have to vote.
Okay, oh, right, you don't have to vote, that's right.
Yeah, I mean-
But Sandy, can you read the motion?
That the board contract with Drew Hoick, Hoick Associates to provide facilitation services for three board retreats.
So if that motion passes, you'll be contracting with Drew for three board retreats?
If we wanted, last time we tabled the motion, which is why it showed, showed up again.
The same motion.
If people wanna just not have it show up again, then we could just vote no.
Or whoever made the motion could, there's been a second already, though.
That was seconded.
You could ask unanimous consent to withdraw it if you wanted to clear the table, as I say, and start over.
Right, thank you.
Can we just table it?
Well, if you table it, it comes back.
It comes back in its current form, so if I would think-
If we wanted to start fresh with the new motion, then, then we should-
Ask for unanimous consent to withdraw.
Yeah, to just withdraw the motion. Anyway, Rhonda?
When are we actually going to provide the transparency around the actual price tag of this facilitator?
We talked about it last, we talked about it last week.
We talked about it, but it's not in the motion.
That's because it wasn't in the table-
Right.
I couldn't put it in-
Yep.
Because it wasn't in the last time's table motion.
It wasn't in the first time, and it wouldn't have been in the second time, so whatever we do moving forward, can we, can we do that? Can we have something attached to it monetary-wise, so people, I can say that I voted for this, knowing how much it costs.
We can do whatever we want, we can do whatever we want, there's no-
Well, I would love to have some transparency around this.
Yep.
Thanks.
So if we want a fresh start, the best thing would be to, uh, remove? Remove-
Ask, make, ask for unanimous consent to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
But before I do that, I do want some sense of commitment. We need to do this sooner than later.
Oh, yeah.
And that, if we can, you know, pull together, you know, I've said my priorities, and I think we need to, in terms of the planning and actual plan, strategic plan, things like that, I think, I agree with Eric, I think those are things that we can do-
Mm-hmm.
On our own.
I mean, I did my homework, I submitted the proposal and brought my priorities, so I think I've demonstrated that I'm committed to this.
All right.
I don't know why you're, if you're just looking at me for-
I'm looking at you because we were having the conversation.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if there was like something specific.
No, this is not my, this is not my ugly face.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I'm gonna send that one at you. But I do think we need to, the priority has to be getting our act together.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to do that sooner than later, and if we can limit it to, if we wanna limit it to two possibilities, and then bring them in, I think we all need to talk to these people.
Yeah, I mean, if it's possible between now and the May 20th meeting to schedule phone screens and try to get him, you know, if someone can make it here in person, let's, let's either talk to him on the phone or meet them in person. It seems like we've got a list of people's priorities pretty close, Christine's got some, and we've all got some, we can provide them that ahead of time. We listened to the proposals, and at the May 20th meeting, we can approve a three-session contract with a dollar amount attached. I mean, it's gonna be different, I would imagine, for whatever consultant we go with, but hopefully we can have a motion on May 20th that approves that consultant, and then we can get started with scheduling as soon as possible.
And this may be a job for more than one consultant.
Maybe. I have a suggestion, Eric.
Yeah.
To your point, and I don't know, I don't know your consultant that you, Rhonda, put forward, I feel like of the one, of the top facilitation, honestly, I would just like us to make a decision here tonight, like, this is just, this is ridic, so what I, my suggestion would be, do the consensus workshop and the power of image shift from top facilitation, because those are sort of like more visionary, getting people to have a conversation, to talk about shared values, to talk about priorities, to talk about the shifting of power. That, to me, seems then that that would set us up then if we want, to bring in Hoick, right? We sort of get, have those conversations, we sort of do more exploration, and then Hoick is able to provide the more foundational school board. I'm fine with that. If Rhonda wants to put forth, you know, strong opinions about hers, that's fine too, but, I mean, let's make a decision, cause I, I would love to be able to do what you're do, you know?
Yeah.
But it's gonna take more time.
So what you are recommending is that for the $300 for the two-hour consensus workshop-
And then the bottom one, the power of the image shift, so that would be 600 for four hours.
So if we did those two in preparation for the more in-depth three-day thing with Drew Hoick, is that something you can live with?
Mm-hmm.
Would we maybe not have to do three days with Drew? Could we reduce it to two then? And then we'd have some, some cost savings, and also be mindful of not creating too many meetings?
Depends on how stellar we could be after the first two.
Bring your in-game.
And Drew did offer that if we wanted to just hire him for one workshop, that he would be willing to do that, even though he normally, you know, contracts for three at a time, but that, since we're, we're having extended conversation about this, he offered that up as a possibility. Well, we could make the motion to include the consensus workshop and the power of image shift, plus, and then up to three days with Drew, three sessions with Drew.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we don't need, if we come, if our makeover works quickly, which, the breath is not being held, but, but if we can, you know, then we can just-
Rhonda, how do you feel about that? Because we did not talk about the two that you put forward, and I know there's some great stuff in here too, so.
I'm not gonna sit here and be a hypocrite. I'm gonna be consistent, reliable, a person of my word. I followed the process.
Mm-hmm.
The public did not have this information until today.
So you don't feel comfortable?
I'm not voting on this.
If we posted it, that would give us two weeks, that would give us to the 20th? Would that be a better vote? Because then we would be able to actually, not a better vote, but, because you would actually be able to vote on a contract with a dollar amount?
Is this your dollar amount?
Yeah, but I mean, I feel like, is this good enough? I don't know if you needed a more formal-
Well, I think we have to have a official contract, but-
Yeah, right. Do you have a vote on it?
That's the dollar amount. Well, this is the work session.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, no, this is the special session, sorry. This is a special session, if we take the, if we get rid of the original motion, and then make a motion that we don't vote on, but vote on, when do we meet again, the 20th?
The 20th.
That we meet, vote on the 20th? That would give the public the opportunity to weigh in, but we would still have a firm motion in place to deal with on the 20th. Does that work for people?
You'll have to table, what are, if you're gonna do a motion today, you're gonna have to table like until, so that it's curious on until the 20th.
Okay, so then we, we take back the, the original motion, make the new motion, table that motion until the 20th. And then your need to have it, I'm sorry, am I keeping you up? No. To have it public will be met.
I, I hope it's everyone's need. I'm sorry. I think that's part of getting our act together, is honoring the people that pay for all of this. It's not just my need.
No, and I honor that, but I also know that we are elected to be stewards of that money.
I can, I can tell you what.
Laura's got her hand up.
Yeah.
Laura's got her hand up, she doesn't talk.
Oh, my God.
Before we get too far down the road about hiring two different entities, I'm just going to say that I did talk to Tricia today, because Zynga, I like her, she's very well qualified, and I like Drew, and I would like to basically concentrate on those two offerings. And, and I agree with Eric's priorities, I think we need to talk about how to work better as a team before we talk about what our vision is for the district. That's all I have to say about that. I would be, I would like to stay with one facilitator.
But you're willing to consider two?
It wouldn't be my preference.
Can you, can you explain that? What's the-
I don't think it's necessary to have two.
Hmm.
I think, I think Tricia and Drew are both capable of getting us through the entire process. And I don't see any need to have, you know, this, one session and then another with another entity. I prefer consistency, and that's how I feel about that.
I think it takes us back to the interview process. If, if, if we don't have consensus around working with two, and we, you know, there's some thoughts on one, then I need to hear from everybody on the list in order to make an educated decision.
There's a couple, a couple of things that could happen. We could, we could also, I mean, could we do this? Could we, could we slot time for either face-to-face or phone calls for these four, and do it next week? I mean, the, the idea of trying to leave, I mean, generally trying to leave Mondays open in case a new, another board thing comes, I mean, I would be available, I know it's short notice, but it's well within a posting timeframe, and then we could, we could talk to them all, we'd be posted, it would be, it would be a post meeting with a motion to hire facilitator slash facilitators, and I would think we could choose from any combination of whoever is on the list posted in time. I think probably, it might, just for practicality, maybe we don't open the nomination period again, maybe we just extend it to these four.
What happens if some of them aren't available on the 13th?
I think we, I think we can still, they, they can send more information, they can discuss, I mean, it's, it's on-
Discuss with who?
Well, they can, I mean, I think, I think board members can reach out to them too. I mean, people have taught, people know some of these facilitators, I mean, if, if we, I think, I think we're, we're offering, we would be offering them a chance to, to talk to the whole board, and it's, if they can't, they can't, but that's, happens sometimes, sometimes you-
So you're saying next Monday night, or next Monday?
That would be my, that would be my thought, is make a decision on this. Next Monday, give, schedule a 20-minute in-person or phone for each of the four, and if they decline, they decline. I think if there, there might be a good reason that they would decline and still be considered anyways, although it probably wouldn't be good for their chances, I would suppose, but I think four, four have been submitted. We'd be posted, and then we would make a, we could make a motion to, we would be posted for the hiring of facilitator, we'd have these four materials in Neptune, and then at the end, presumably someone would make a motion to hire blank or blank and blank at a cost not to exceed blank. All right, we don't have to pre-write the specific motion as long- All right, we don't have to pre-write the specific motion as long as we're noticed, but, and I think, well, I think it's probably, this is better, it gives, it just, we're noticed then, and...
So is everyone available on the 13th?
Yeah, yes.
I'm out of town until about 3:30. Take me at least an hour and a half, two hours to get back. So I'd, so six o'clock would work.
Six thirty, six.
Six o'clock would work, yeah.
If we give them each 15 minutes, that would be...
Yeah, done in an hour.
Mm-hmm. I like it.
And we're giving them the option, they can either come here and meet with us or over the phone.
Yep, and if they can't, if they can't do either, they're welcome to send as much stuff as they would like. By Friday, and then by this Friday.
Right.
And if they don't submit it by this Friday, it's not going in the meeting. So we tell them tomorrow, right? And, yep, but, okay.
So if I could, part of, part of what happens sometimes at the board table is we don't always have what we need to be able to do what the board needs. So if, I just want clarification of what you need us to do, so that we have things posted or out there the way people need them and want them. So it's my understanding that Sandy will be following up with all four proposed opportunities for professional development, okay? And that you will offer to them, just like we do if we have an RFP out, it's the final offer, or whatever we call it, last and final. So we would offer that, and you want that by when? Dr. Warren, what do you think? Brenda?
What do you mean, the final?
They said Anders, yeah, Anders said that they could submit more stuff.
Just if there's...
If you want to add, if you want to add anything...
Right, I mean, like, for example, this one that I sent is pretty, you know, she emailed this to me, because the turnaround last time was so long. So I could go back and say, is there any detail that you want to include, to be considered for Monday? And maybe or maybe not, but it would just be emailed over.
So, so I just want to be clear and fair to the various vendors, and make sure we're asking them the same thing. If we, are we going to ask them for, to submit anything else they'd like to and not clarify? I just want to be fair and clear with the...
Anything else you'd like to submit, and we're offering you a time slot on, I think we should probably give, I think we, I think maybe, maybe 20 minutes, 15 flies by pretty fast when there's seven people here. And then it would, yeah, it would behoove them to, you know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to be information, information should be, you know, especially if, especially important if someone is not going to be here but wants to submit more detailed information, then we'll let them know we'd like you to get it in by, by Friday.
So then, anything that Sandy receives by Friday, is everyone, Brenda, are you thinking, everyone's thinking that we need, that Sandy just sends it all out? Is that, is it posted? That isn't posted, or is it posted?
Have you posted it, and are you filming this? Because we did check what D has, because it's a film.
Oh, for the half hour? Oh, that's a good question. Do you want it filmed?
Does it need to be?
Well, that's up to the board.
It doesn't have to be?
No, it's strictly up to you.
I think it's fine.
Everyone's agreed that it doesn't have to be filmed?
No.
Okay. So...
Do you need staff here? Because I'll have to change adapter points. So do you need staff here?
I don't, I don't...
I don't think so.
No.
I don't know, I mean...
So you don't need Sandy?
For notes? Will you, if you Skype or what have, are you open to Skype or Google Hangout or something?
Yeah.
So then someone will be just available, and you'll know, so we don't need any tech?
I don't know, for Skype, we'll probably just use the speakerphone.
Okay.
Well, we should, I should be able to, I should be able to handle, if someone wants to do a Hangout or a Skype, we'll...
Good. I just want to make sure you have what you need, okay?
And then do you want everything I received on Neptune?
Yeah.
Sure.
And they should know, they should know that whatever they say is going to go on Neptune, you know, so...
They assumed it was...
Well, I mean, right, like, there's, like, in, like, in, in my, in my business, there's certain, you know, when you're negotiating pricing and things, you might be, there might be some proprietary... Yeah.
Great. So I think, so I think we're clear. I'm thinking what we'll do, just to make sure that we've hit the mark, is tomorrow we'll kind of process it through, and maybe just make sure we run it through the board one more time, to make sure that everybody has, they agreed on. I just, I just really think sometimes it gets very confusing, and so I appreciate the clarity, because this is, this is an important part, and it's, and we want to make sure the board has what they need, so they can be successful.
Do you want to draw the motion? Do you want me to withdraw it, or table it, to have a placeholder for the 20th?
We don't, we don't need a placeholder.
No.
We just have to...
Do we even need a, we're creating a meeting now with a, we're creating a new meeting on the topic.
No, the 20th. No, the 20th. We're not voting on the 13th, are we?
The 13th?
I suppose we could.
Oh, I thought, I thought we, I thought we would, I mean, we would be done then.
Should we post for action?
Yeah, post for action, then that would be...
Then you should power...
And then just withdraw the current motion.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
I am fine with that.
Can we ask a question? I'm sorry to come back to this. We still haven't figured out, within the meeting next Monday, which is a fabulous step, what our priority, what that, what we still want them to do. So what is the plan for each individual board member to be able to share that with one another? So that's part of the discussion next Monday, because they can come in and talk all we want, but, so...
Yeah, but I mean, what I, like, this document that you created with your kind of priorities, if any other board member wanted to do the same thing, and we submitted that to the four people, and said, you know, each of us, you know, and some of them might be the same, but each of the seven board members gave a list of what they're, what they're hoping to get out of these sessions, and allow them to read that information and bring, you know, have that knowledge when they come to the interview.
So would that go to Sandy? Sorry, Sandy, I feel like I'm adding more work onto you, so if anybody feels that, if they have anything, they would send it to Sandy, and she, you would share that with the facilitators?
Well, she'd put it, probably send it to us. We have...
Sandra Dawson, those would be the questions that we can ask the facilitators.
Yeah, you just... And then the, we can share it with the facilitators, too.
Yeah, and I'd want to do that before Friday, so they have some time to read through that and process before they talk to us a week from today.
Right.
You know, we'd want to get that to them soon.
It's for them to understand how to then create a facilitation that fits what we're asking.
I would think that for any of us, it's not going to be that hard to come up with how we can play nice together.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, so all the questions will go to you, Brenda, and then you'll all go to Sandy? I'm think, okay.
So, yeah, all the questions go to Sandy, then, and then any information that the facilitators want to send you, you'll have. And any other information board members want to send about the facilitators that we get, you can send to Sandy, too. And then I'll look it over on Friday. I mean, we'll basically just post, tell the facilitators what they're giving us is being posted on Neptune. If they don't want something posted, then we won't post it.
Do you want all the questions posted?
And then, no, I don't think we need to post the questions. I don't know. Do you want the questions posted? No. Okay.
It's going to be an open meeting. Yes or no?
No.
No.
I can check in with you later this week to double-check.
Off on Thursday.
Okay. I'm here Friday. And are you posting Friday? Okay. All right. All right. The entertaining motion for adjournment of the special board, are we done? Sorry.
Do you need to withdraw?
Oh, I thought we agreed.
We did, but we didn't, do we have to vote on the withdrawal?
I thought it was just consensus.
Clearly, you know, you can just see if there's any objection, and then see if there's none, see it's withdrawn.
Yeah, I thought that's what I did, and didn't see any objection. So, okay.
Move to adjourn.
Just, all in favor? Aye. All right, let's start our regular board meeting. All seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, and to my far right over there, Jamie Barbien, our intercity student council members, Jamie Barbien, who's the president from, of intercity student council, and is from West High School, and Paige Dessert?
Dessert.
Dessert, from Preble High School, Paige. Also, to my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. As a reminder, members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on Our District, and then Board of Education. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Also, tonight, the board will provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members, are prohibited. And then I have two people that would like to speak before the board tonight. First, I'll call up Lorraine Poplasky.
My name is Lorraine Poplasky. I live at 1281 Emily Street in Green Bay. At the last open meeting, almost all of the French teachers stated their reasons and thoughts as to why French should remain intact throughout the district and not cut off in some of our middle schools. Although there has not been a response to that issue, I am happy to say there has been some communication about the seventh graders being able to finish their high school credit in French. Even if that communication is confusing, and what little we know does not seem to be totally thought out, parents still have not been contacted, and everything has been by word of mouth. Lombardi French teacher Lori Lambert, who is unable to be here tonight, and asked me to speak on her behalf. She has students who know more than she does about what is happening at Lombardi French, and announce their findings to the class, often as they walk into the door. The discussion for finishing their French credit has gone from busing to Southwest to finish their credit, or long-distance learning options. Nothing more concrete than that. I applaud creativity when problem-solving, however, these rumors really need to stop, and the parents do need to know what is going on. We, the French teachers, would also like to know what's going on. One detail, a little unnerving for me, is that even though a counselor at Lombardi was able to remove these students from the French roster, the names who are currently now in other classes will not be returned to French unless the student actually goes down in person to Student Services and asked to be put back on the list. This is disappointing to me. This is how you lose students in a program. Is there no one to check on these students, especially if parents have not been notified? This is how you lose a program. There is a meeting on June 13th for world language teachers, and perhaps there'll be some clarity offered there as to what direction the district is going in. I will be attending. On a side note, a new student from Africa was recently registered at Preble, who speaks Swahili. I do not believe there are many teachers speak Swahili there at Preble. However, his next language, although not fluent, was French. Thank you.
Next is Mara Marks.
Mara Marks at 444 North Wisconsin Street de Pier. Good evening, bonsoir. I am a teacher of French at Southwest and Preble High Schools. I am here to express my concern regarding the dropping of French at Lombardi Middle School, where I started my career as junior high back in the early 80s. Lombardi Middle School, which is the direct feeder to Southwest High School, that is. When I spoke to Mr. Bohm, Southwest's principal, just this morning, he told me that he had only been made aware of the situation of, at Lombardi, late last week, when a parent of an incoming student had emailed him. The parent's question was whether this Lombardi decision would impact Southwest's offering of French for high-school-aged students. Mr. Bohm told the student, or the parent, rather, that no, Southwest had no intention of dropping French. I am therefore here to pose the question. Then, why not continue French at Lombardi, when there are opportunities for students to take French at the other middle schools? If enough students have signed up for French, as Lori Lambert, Lombardi's current French teacher, has, was led to believe, why not offer it there? Rumors of busing the children to other schools, or having them take French via long-distance learning abound. Kindly let us know what is going on, so that we may be able to guide students and parents in their decisions regarding French, so as to truly prepare them to be college, career, and community-ready, and to be inspired to succeed in a diverse world.
I have a third question.
Rhonda, Mara? Rhonda wants to ask you a question.
Thank you for, for your thoughts and your, your insight on this. I have a question. Could you explain what long-distance learning is to everyone? Just so we all know what that is.
Well, in the past, Southwest, for example, had a studio, a television studio, where the teachers were in front of a camera. I know they did this with Japanese and Russian previously, quite a while back. And they were transmitted via the television to other students, either within the district or outside of the district. And that was something that someone had mentioned, that perhaps could go on with the French classes or other world language classes in Green Bay. So that's all I really know about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mara. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board at this point? Hearing none, I will move to our teaching and learning work session, and that will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We will begin with the discussion item, achievement gap reduction mid-year update.
Let the professionals do their work.
And that's why you are not our IT guy.
I know. Thank you. So joining me is Andrea Lanmore, and I just wanted to let you know that the Achievement Gap Reduction Midyear Report is a midyear report on our efforts to reduce achievement gaps in our highest-poverty schools. We have 10 schools that are identified, and previously this was... We have ten schools that are identified, and previously this was known as Sage. So this is not the main report. This is the midyear report, and previously it was something that was just submitted electronically. But this year, the requirements changed and it's requested that we share it at least during a board session. Michelle?
Just a point of clarification. Thank you, Mr. Vegas, and thank you, Ms. Landor. As we think about this, this is one of the requirements by the state of Wisconsin, correct, Andrea?
Correct.
So that's why it has to come at this time.
Correct.
So it's been calendared. Okay, thank you.
The state of Wisconsin, because we are on trimesters, has given us the opportunity to report twice, and it doesn't have to be at the end of each semester, so that it can follow our data collection periods.
So again, the more broad report comes in August. So this is our midyear check. It's a quite lengthy report, but if there were any specific questions, we'd be available at this time to answer those questions. Otherwise, we can go on.
So first, thank you for this report. It was really, really informative and helpful to really take a look at each of our individual schools and see things like class size and coaching and things that are taking place. One thing that really stuck out to me is the success we're having with math was really, really impressive. And I think Nancy probably led that process before I was here in selecting that curriculum, but sometimes that goes unseen. You know, we adopted a new curriculum, probably came before the board, they approved it, and now we're seeing some of those results. So Nancy, I'm sure there was a whole team, teachers and everyone that was involved, but that was really, really shocking, in a good way, to see the success that's happening in math, really across the board in different pockets. So thank you for that. As we look at literacy, obviously, you know, some more, you know, some progress that can be made. My question is that this shows trajectory towards meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark. It doesn't show growth, correct? So I mean, this is one piece of data, but I mean, when I look at kids who were not on track in the fall and are still not on track, it doesn't mean they haven't made any progress. They could have been really far behind in our...
Correct.
Okay, so...
Correct. It is how many students are meeting are on the trajectory for making end-of-the-year fifty NCE on the STAR reading. So it's our standardized assessment, our STAR assessment. It's our screener. It is not our curriculum assessments. You'll see in the narrative under each school that the principals have summarized their narrative, in their narrative, their curriculum assessments.
So I'm sure that that's available and something else that I would find really helpful, to be able to celebrate the success. Yes, the kids aren't getting to where we want them to be, but there's a lot of great things happening in our school. And I understand the intent of this report isn't to capture that, but at some point, you know, when that becomes available, maybe that's in the end-of-the-year report, I'd really like to, just to be able to celebrate that point, too, the kids that are succeeding. And then the final question that I have, the reports, I wish I could say that I spent time reading all ten that our principals probably put a lot of time and effort into. My question is, with how thorough those are, is the purpose of those just for this report? Is there, you know, that's coming to the board? Is this for a DPI thing?
Great question.
Because it seems like a lot of work.
Right. So this report is the AGR Achievement Gap Reduction Report. That is a state statute, but it is about continuous school improvement. If you look at the three strategies, it's a focus on learning, a focus on collaboration, and a focus on results, which is the three foundational pillars of continuous school improvement. And that is through the strategies that are outlined in the AGR Act.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't just writing this for me, because I unfortunately did not take the time to read all ten.
Right.
Skimmed them, but I wanted to make sure that it was a good use of their time.
We use it as a needs assessment for all of our Title I schools. In addition to that, we look at for asset mapping. And having coaching, the one-on-one tutoring in the small classroom sizes, really is part of the assets that they have to help drive continuous school improvement.
Thank you.
I think I asked this last time. There's not any comparison year to year. So my question is, when we see progress to goal fifty percent, are these numbers better than last year or the same? Or how do we know over time that our, I mean, because like Eric said, the math looks really good, you know, literacy, there's a little bit, there's more room for improvement, but I'm just curious what the trend is year over year.
So great question. We do keep the data. We're looking at the schools when they're analyzing during the assessment. They're looking at, they're looking all the way back from their fourteen, fifteen school year. So they're looking at change over time. How many of our kids, what you're seeing here in the ten schools that are high poverty, schools that have a lot of poverty, and so we also look at how many of those children are the same children? We also look at what is our teacher turnover? How many of our teachers are the same teachers? So we're really looking at strategies, which are teacher practices, assistive practices, and then we're looking at what is its impact on the student achievement.
Sorry. So when we see the population numbers, are those only kids who took the September STAR and the midyear STAR? So if that child moved in in November, they're not...
Correct.
And Strump works very closely with us from program and evaluation perspective.
And works with our technology department. And we set, we call it a logic model, where we're really looking at third Friday count in September, second Friday count in January, and the children have to be in state.
So what if they straddle two schools? Where are you counting them?
Yes, you're going to see that when they straddle two schools. You'll see that in the overall. The very first chart is a district-wide chart, only our Achievement Gap Reduction, our high-poverty schools.
Thank you. I had other questions, but these two nailed it, so thank you very much.
Sure. Just one other piece I wanted to include as well. This provides, to an extent, a systems view, but a systems view of ten of our schools and our schools with the highest poverty. We are, in our May monitoring report, sharing some information on our system of continuous improvement as well as our calendar for how we'll be bringing things forward into the future, is, or at least what we would propose to the board for that, related to the non-negotiables work that we had done previously. And what that will do is it'll allow you to do some systemic overview looks into our school related to a variety of topics that would provide deeper insight into all schools, not just the AGR schools. So I think that could be helpful for you as we move forward.
So we'll see another report like this in August, like an end-of-the-year report?
Correct. And that one will include all the schools, like you're saying?
No. I'll leave that just to yours.
But the May Progress Monitoring Report will be an overview of the system of continuous improvement. It's not going to be an opportunity to go deep, because I think that that's something you would have to take a look at and decide if that's something you're interested in, but it could be something that might be a retreat. And when you mentioned work around strategic planning and measures to see progress on strategic planning, we do have some pieces in place that could be at least the building blocks for what you might consider either independently or working with a consultant.
Thank you, Joe.
My entire career as a board member, this is my favorite report.
Well, there you go.
We appreciate the positive feedback.
As we think forward, thank you, John, for opening the door about strategic planning. We already have developed scorecards. We're working on those, so we'll have those available, too, from a high-level view. And also, the goal will be to have, I know that some have already weighed in and used Y-Sesh Local and monitored reports, but we're looking for a very nimble way for the board to be able to jump in and look as in real time. And that's been something a work in progress and labor of love, but I think that coupled with the calendar and the current strategic framework will help you to identify for sure if these are still your priorities or if the priorities have shifted anyways. And so, before we go any further down the road, I think it's good timing. Nicely done.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
All right. John Dewey Academy of Learning Charter School Update. Jen Agamide is approaching the table.
With a smile? Yes. There you go.
We hope this is your favorite report. I know, it's hard to follow.
I know.
Oh, boy. Never seen my last report.
Good evening. Jen is here per board policy. It is the second review for the board of try re-school progress to, towards, I'm sorry, towards their school, where is it? School success plan goals. Jen, can you introduce your board members that are here tonight, please?
Oh, most certainly. So in the back, we have our board president, Paula Manley, and we also have one of our members, Joni Swiger.
Thank you.
They asked you to stand because that probably ever is... She must have a way. She's still ungrateful. Oh, come on. Thank you, Vicki.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I wanted to start by just providing a few highlights of some of our graduating seniors, as you can see there. In addition to these students, we also have one student entering the military to going to cosmetology school, and then the rest are going to either a two- or a four-year school. We're very proud of the accomplishments that they've achieved. I also have a projection for enrollment next year. We've been keeping a close eye on this because we knew that we would be near or at capacity. And considering the number of pending intra-district transfer requests, we will need to do a lottery for both our middle school and our high school programs because we will be at capacity. Moving on to our school success plan goals, we did, after speaking with Dr. Strump about the STAR assessment data, we decided to amend our goals to use the normal curve equivalency like the other schools. So, and of course, with fifty being grade level, we wanted to have the majority of our students at or above that fifty mark. So you can see the various percentages there. Our action steps remain the same because the goal, of course, is still student improvement. So some of the things that we put in place or continued to help students achieve this goal is our use of the online Achieve 3000, otherwise known as Empower Program. And this is a program for students to increase their comprehension and ability to read higher-level text. And I also have some of that data there as well. According to the program, typical Lexile growth is twenty-five, and you can see that each of the grade levels surpassed that. We also continue to work with our students to learn how to research using credible sources. We also take students to UWGB to do some research with the archives. And we also implemented a new seminar this year called PBL 101, Project-Based Learning 101. And that is because we recognized our new students were struggling with some of the foundational skills needed to complete their projects successfully. So we have students in the six-to-eight-week seminar, and the topics rotate and vary. And the whole point is to help them learn how to, not just find an idea, but how to find those credible sources, how to read through those sources and take notes appropriately so that they can then use them for the rest of their project process. We also use the district-approved Reading Intervention Fast Forward for students who need that. And then we also have other various content seminars that our staff members design so that students can also get a little bit more of that direct instruction in those subject matters if they request it or if we suggest it for them. And we are also very grateful that we were able to hire a limited-term English teacher this year who started in January. That's been helpful as well. Are there any questions yet?
How do you feel about next year?
We're very excited. We're very excited for a new building, a new roommate, and to be at capacity. It's great.
Do you have any seniors who are in this current graduating class?
We have fifteen currently.
Fifteen. And what sets the capacity? So you mentioned that we have to do a lottery next year. Some kids that want to go to J-Doll can't go to J-Doll. What sets that number?
Staffing. So we, in our contract with the district, our staff members, our advisors can have twenty students maximum, ideally fifteen. We've always gone up to twenty, sometimes even a little bit more. So right now, with our current staff, those are the numbers that we can have.
Sure.
So just as a follow-up, Jen, the charter says what for students?
The charter says...
Your charter.
The charter says per advisor, fifteen to twenty students, but it doesn't have a maximum identified that I remember.
Yeah, it does. It's a hundred and something. Hundred and twenty or something?
I've heard the number, I've heard one-twenty being used before, but I didn't see that in the contract.
I think it was in the very original...
It was in the charter.
The original charter that we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let me ask this, because this is really, I've been thinking a lot about John Dewey and what a tremendous job you folks do and how successful your students have been. And every stu, I mean, I've been to graduations that are just heartwarming, and kids come around and they do phenomenal things and get big scholarships, which is really awesome. My question is, if you receive kids on a waitlist, I would like to see us look at that in consideration of where they're coming from and have a deeper look to see if there's any possibility we could, you know, because I don't, that's why I had sent a letter out or a question out about, you said we were full, and I'm thinking that isn't the number I remember on the charter. So I just would ask for more consideration and conversation, should those numbers be available, so that we could just at least have that internally. That's all.
So you're saying that, for instance, if you have... Fifteen on the waiting list, is it time to talk about firing another person?
That's what I'm thinking. At least have that conversation.
Okay. Very good.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Jen, can you share when the graduation date is, please, and invite the board?
Yes, the graduation is June 6th, and this year it's going to be held at the backstage at the Meyer at 5:00 PM, and you're all invited, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on then to our second goal, which is for math. We use the same percentages, and you can see there that we are, we have so far met those goals. I forgot to mention that this STAR data is actually from February's assessment because our students are actually taking their final STAR assessment this week, so that wasn't available yet. Some of the action steps that we put in place to help students achieve this goal was restructuring our math courses a little bit. In the rest of our project work, we allow students to earn credits in increments of .25. And we found that some students were struggling to finish their math courses within one school year. They often would continue working over the summer, sometimes even into the following school year before they finished a course. And we wanted to help them feel success faster, so we created quarter-credit math courses. And we also, that also allowed for students to begin incorporating math project work into their studies instead of just using the online math program. So we found that that has been really helpful this year. Students are really excited about that. We also have a full-time math instructor who is also our online advisor. And we also have a retired educator who tutors three times a week at John Dewey. And then we also have some student tutors who earn service learning hours by helping their classmates. And we have also made an effort to encourage more collaboration between students when working through their math program and allowing, you know, them to help one another when And our third goal relates to the academic career planning. We are trying something new this year. We created an academic career planning portfolio, and we created a template using Google Sites with the goal that each student would create a portfolio that they could then submit digitally to college admissions, to scholarship committees, possibly even prospective employers. We ran into a little snafu with that because we want the students to be able to take it with them, and if they're using their school Gmail account, that doesn't happen. So we are currently working with our technology integrator to find a different platform to use so that the students can take this with them and then continue to develop it as they continue their studies after high school. Looking at those scores, you can see that there is one glaring area with our seniors. When we looked at this data and took some time to reflect, we realized that of our fifteen seniors, twelve are online, and they are not in our building very often. We also have students who take classes during first or second hour at their neighborhood high school. And we work through the academic career planning goals during Friday circles, is what we call them at our school, an advisory circle. So we definitely need to rethink that practice because not all of our students are present at that time. And we have discovered that if they're not doing that there with us, then... at that time, and we have discovered that if they're not doing that there with us, then it's more difficult for them to get that done on their own.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, nice job, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Now, we have the School Resource Officer Program. Start with a program update.
I hope this is your favorite. You keep trying.
Are you happy?
Good evening. I'm joined by Dr. Gwen Stramp, who has helped with the program process of working through the committee and focusing on the things that we felt would help us in rewriting the board policy, which you'll see in a little while, and also the contract, but more importantly, improving the program overall. So, this school year, we did convene a committee. The task was reviewing the SRO program goals and the purpose. To do that, we went through different activities over the course of several months, including job shadowing, empathy interviews, an activity where we matched priorities with board policy, reviewing the SRO program history, where it really started and how we got to where we are today. And then we asked Dr. Stramp to do a survey for us, and if you could talk about that a little bit.
I certainly can. Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to bring the information to you from our school climate survey, specific to the School Resource Officer questions. So, the annual school climate survey was conducted during the months of February and March of this school year, and as you are aware, the school climate in our district is measured through parallel statements presented to the stakeholder groups of parents, students, and staff. The dimensions of school climate are relationships, teaching and learning practices, safety and resources. Statements in regard to the School Resource Officer role were delivered through the resource section of the school climate survey. The information presented in this letter is specific to the School Resource Officer. Full information about the school climate survey results with confidence levels, confidence intervals, coefficients for internal consistency, and participant demographic information will be presented to the Board of Education at a future meeting. So, this is just the specifics around the School Resource Officer. So, the summary of the findings, in 2019, for the school climate survey results, in participation for these questions, we had 1,111 parents participate, 3,508 students in grades 6 through 12, and staff 1,825. In the letter, on page four, we have the information about the school climate survey. For our climate survey, we view the data in terms of agreement and agreement to a specific statement. The table on page four is a summary of the distribution of agreement. The first step in analyzing data is to look at the distribution of the response. Then we take that distribution and we look at it in interaction among a characteristic such as a stakeholder group. So, the full survey statement that was given to our parents is also listed on page four. You're viewing the statements that were written from a parent or guardian perspective, but please know we did adjust those statements for our students and staff, so they were formatted accordingly. And as you review the table, you will notice that the distribution of agreement is relatively consistent for each of the stakeholder groups. Some other observations would be, the one statement that had lower agreement than the other statements across all stakeholder groups was in regard to the SRO as a resource for children to go to for help with problems with friends. So, on your table, you would notice that that is the fifth line down under friends when you look at the labels for each of the questions. The distribution was consistent, however, the stakeholder group with more neutral responses was the student group. The distribution of agreement for the staff group demonstrated a pattern of 80% or more for the role of the SRO for positive attitude toward community, the police, and a resource for crime. A pattern of 70% to 80% agreement for the SRO to be a resource for presentations, bullying, and security existed in the staff data. So, that's a descriptive summary of the agreement that was present, and we looked at agreeing, being agree and strongly agree, disagree, disagree and strongly disagree, and then we had neutral. What is not indicated in the table is the percent of individuals that declined to answer or indicated that they did not understand the question. So, if you're going across and you're adding it up and expecting 100%, it's going to be a few percentage points off to account for those individuals. We also had some open text box questions, and that's on page five. So, if you turn to that page. At the end of the resource section, there was an open text box area for parents and staff to present additional information about the survey statements. Students were not presented with a text box at the end of the resource section. The information presented in an open text box is analyzed through the method of content analysis. There are content analysis procedures that are used in order to provide an objective inference about the data collected. The first technique applied in the content analysis is to code a statement as positive-supported, negative-unsupportive, or not-applicable. This coding technique identifies the polarity of a statement. Each statement supportive, unsupportive, or not-applicable is counted as one statement for that category. Where possible, a statement is coded as a full unit of analysis. However, if a statement had both a supportive and unsupportive comment, that was parsed into two separate statements, coded accordingly, and counted as separate comments for the topic of the School Resource Officer. So, the result of the polarity in the distribution for parents, supportive 51 comments, unsupportive 26, 34 not-applicable, and generally, we found that that statement in the not-applicable area was that they were not aware that the SRO was at the school or that their school had an SRO. A total of 111 comments for the parents. The results for the staff in an area of polarity was supportive 158, unsupportive 7, not-applicable 12, for a total of 177. On page five, I also have the other themes that were present because that's another content analysis procedure that you go through to find common themes. Overall, the statements were developed based on the Board of Education policy for the objectives of the SRO, statements used previously in the Green Bay Police Department and Green Bay Area Public School District SRO program evaluations, and commonality of statements found in the literature for qualitative instruments to collect stakeholder feedback for SRO programs. So, I'll turn it back to you, Vicki.
Thank you, Dr. Stramp. So, next steps, we've updated the contract based on the information that we've learned. We've updated board policy. You'll see a substantial difference between old policy and the new one that we're going to present to you tonight. We're also going to embark on a former program evaluation next school year, and we've listed the elements to consider for evaluation purposes. Number two, we're going to collaborate with the Green Bay Police Department to develop standard operating procedures for the program. We already have a three-ring binder that we share with new SROs, but we really want to clean that up and have it align with the new board policy pending your approval of the policy. Number three, SRO collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Department, pupil services, and our family engagement from the Equity Department staff for lesson plan development for supplemental classroom modules and presentations. We want to collaborate, number four, with the Green Bay Police Department to develop the professional learning plan, which we've had extensive discussion about. We wanted to mirror what we do with our other staff in the district. And then, five, a continuation of the SRO program committee, which everyone but one person has willingly volunteered to continue with. So, thank you, Ms. Sidney Cowan, Ms. Warren.
Any questions or comments?
Well done. Okay. So, 1,001 parents participated in the survey. So, what percentage of that is that district-wide, as far as, we have a lot of parents, right? So, what would you say that is?
Will that be in the full report?
That would be in the full report. And actually, just to clarify, when we look at, for participation, we're looking at a household, so we wouldn't be counting, you know, every parent. Just like an average. Yeah. So, I believe the district has around 12,000, but that will, we'll look into that for households, but that'll come out in the final report.
And where did you say that was?
Oh, that will be placed on the board agenda, so... And I noticed there were, you said there were 111 comments from parents. Are we able to look at those comments before we vote on this contract to continue the program? You would be able to look at the comments in relation to the coding? Mm-hmm. And would we be able to have those?
The school climate survey, the board is not...
That is correct. What? So, where we are right now is, for the comments, I've gone through and coded them, and then what I need to be made aware of is the procedure for releasing those out because we haven't had any of our interim people look at them either. So, when do you anticipate that the board can look at the comments from the parents related to the SRO program? I don't have a date for that, but what I can tell you is, we do go through the comments, and we have specified in our directions for those, that we will go through and take out anything that would be, like if it's naming particular individuals, if it is a comment that is extreme in some way. So, when that does come around, we would have all that taken care of, and right now we're in the process of doing that. So, they are not prepared right now to do that. What do you mean by an extreme comment that would be taken care of? How would you take care of it? So, what, so, for example, if there was a comment about, let's say, an employee at the school, we would remove that name. And if there was an objectionable word, a word that would not be, one that you would probably allow your students to use in the classroom, we would remove that. That's what I mean. Okay. So, profanity and names, that would be it? Mm-hmm. Okay. In coding the comments, we're looking for themes. So, if that's the question about what you want to check to see how these were separated into the themes, then you look more at how that theme applied and look for, sometimes it's an index of keywords. So, you would be looking at that versus each individual comment. You want to do both of those together. So, I don't know what it is you're interested in. I would, I'd be interested in how the parents who took the time to do this assume that we read these. So, I actually assume that we would as well. So, I'm wondering when we would be able to do that, so that we can get a feel for how the 111 people that took the time to write that out, how they feel about that, and I'm interested in knowing that.
Can we discuss how long that might take and then get back to the board?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Stramp. You're very appreciated.
Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, Vicki. All right. Now, the contracts?
We started this process back in November with pre-meetings at the district level. We looked at best practices from the National Organization for School Resource Officers. We also, thanks to Melissa's research, reviewed contracts and policies from other districts, quite a variety. And then we received input from the SRO committee and used some of the activities that we did in our committee work to help design this contract. And then, I think, started sharing with the board just recently, maybe within the last month. But prior to that, back in February, began meetings, actually with the city and with Green Bay PD, to start hammering out some of the details. So, what you see is the contract offer that we would like approval.
So, first of all, I just want to point out that I think that this, the contract overall is certainly a substantial, substantial improvement from what we've been just kind of, more or less, the board, me included, have quietly renewed or allowed to auto-renew over the years. So, although I will have questions, I may have portions that I don't agree with certain details here or there, that I just want to make sure that's not interpreted as me not liking the contract. There isn't, there is not a time or need for me to go point by point over the parts that I think are good because there, and there's many things. There are many more things specified here than before. I think I'll hold off at this point and see what others have to say, because I think there might be a lot of overlap among things, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And I think, you know, again, the question, by design, questions are going to be asked on what people have remaining concerns about, and it doesn't mean that it isn't a massive step in the right direction.
Are there other questions or comments?
I didn't understand. So, you, you have some questions or you don't have questions?
I probably, I probably will have some, but I wanted to, I guess I didn't want to just run down the whole list myself, but I could. I could start. I guess I thought there would be a lot of people.
Why don't you start, because no one else is jumping at a chance to have questions.
Okay. I thought people would be jumping at it. So, okay, I guess I'd like to, I'm interested in, it's not a deal breaker for me, but I'm interested in knowing why we didn't go further with maybe trying to get the city to cover a part of the cost. I mean, there's, it's been a long time that we've covered the whole cost. I understand there's Fund 80, but we didn't, unless there was just not board interest in pursuing some of the cost, I guess I just, it seems like the city is getting a good deal, and in other cities, they pay some of the cost. I'm not even saying it would have to be 50. So, I just thought I would put that out there.
I think I would want direction from the board if that's something in the future that we want to do. I don't know if that is a vote.
We talked about this earlier.
It was talked about.
Did we? Okay.
We did. We talked about it, it was continued, it was on daily.
Okay.
Because they're primarily our employees, and they don't, they, I mean, they're, technically, they are hired by the police department, but they, they work... They serve in our schools. They serve in our schools.
Okay. So, let me find the, so, are we, what's the best thing to look at? The compare document?
Whatever you prefer.
The new, okay, do we have, so, on the compare document, page, I guess it would be under 3B, 3B1? But I don't see, okay, this would be page two of the compare document.
Are you in attachment A, Andrew? Is it the roles and responsibilities of the district, or the, I'm sorry, the PD?
Um, wait. Well, now I'm...
Because there's no 3 in here.
There's no Roman numeral 3 in the language of the contract.
I'm sorry, that was a, that was a policy question, and I just thought it was a contract term, but that was my mistake, so I apologize.
So, are your questions on the contract or on the policy?
I am looking to see if I have any other... I think all of... I think all of I think all my other questions would go under, under policy. So my, my mistake, I thought it was a contract term, it's a policy item.
Okay.
So are there any other questions on the contract? This is the contract. Rhonda?
Okay. I noticed there's not a number, unless I missed it, of SROs that we're contracting with or is there, did I miss it?
Yep, it's in.
What is it?
One A, under scope of services, attachment A.
Hold on.
The chief of police will assign 11 law enforcement officers.
Awesome. Thank you. Yep. Okay. And then since, you know, we've obviously, they serve in our schools, we don't hire them necessarily or they're, however it was termed before, but they do serve in our schools. I had asked about education instruction and what they provide as far as when they come in and do presentations in classrooms. Is it possible that we can actually have them commit to what they're going to do in the contract? Because I would think much like we require our teachers to go through, you know, specific curriculum and we have them go through that and we, we require certain things. I think it would be interesting and important to have it listed what they're going to because I think there are concerns sometimes with what maybe they're discussing, what they're talking, what they're instructing about. But if we know that it's actually, you know, these four or five things that they're going to be committed to and, and they're not going to go outside of that. Right? Because part, a, a big part of what is stated that their job is, is to come in and build relationships and instruct, but there's really nothing in there related to that. Unless I'm not seeing that again, which is possible.
On page A eight, section Roman numeral three, C nine. And Christina had asked for a clarification of that language, so.
What page is that?
It's on A, A eight. It's section three, Roman numeral three, C nine.
Hold on, I'm getting there.
Do you have a page number?
I'm in the contract.
We're in the contract.
I'm in the atta- attachment A, A. I, I was in the compare document. So it's page A six in the regular contract. On page A six
Mm-hmm.
in the clean copy, Roman numeral three, C nine. Presenting educational programs in partnership and collaboration with the classroom instructors on topics such as drug awareness, bullying, personal safety, alcohol and other drugs, violence and other crime prevention and internet safety.
And is that something that they're committing to or is it we teach, or we instruct all of this or is it, we can kind of pull from that? How does that work?
Yeah, it really depends on the classroom instructor.
Okay.
Some of them would prefer, for example, doing the bullying presentation themselves. Some might want the supplement of an officer coming in and talking about it. Really depends on the teacher. They, they drive a lot of this.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you for that, Vicki, because you had mentioned lesson plan development with teaching and learning. That's to facilitate that plan coming together.
Yes.
And I just want to say as well that you both have been wonderful to work with, with this contract and very receptive to feedback. I did have some concerns around the education because these topics align with health education, national standards. And I wanted to ensure we had some bumpers because I was concerned about it not being clear enough that they would start teaching health education. And I just wanted to say thank you because I think that this provides flexibility, but a little bit more clear guidance. So thank you.
Thank you.
Still me?
Rhonda.
Okay. So obviously it's referenced, the gangs, gangs are referenced in there. Do we know what they discuss, what they instruct, what that sounds like and looks like?
That one's for building administrators and staff. So it's keeping our, our buildings aware of what's going on in the community.
Okay, but I guess, right, but I guess I'm wondering what, what the topic is and what they talk about with regards to gangs, like in general, what?
To, to the staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an update of what's going on in our community, what types of gangs, gang. I'm sorry.
Do they put that together themselves, Vicki? Like what's, how does that come, how does that create?
It's not a formal, I'm sorry, I might not be explaining this. It's not like a presentation, these are, this is what gang means. It's, it's really an update of, it's very similar to what we do with drugs. You know, now vaping and the jewels are common, so they would appear before staff and say, these are the new trends, these are things to look for. So that's, that's what the gang piece is about. This is, this too, that lists under 10 are topics driven by our building leaders. So if they believe it's a concern that they would like to increase staff awareness, then they would ask the SROs to come in and provide that. Does that make sense, Ms. Nocco?
Yeah, I did, it does. Thank you. And then I have one more question about the training that they receive. And I'm trying to find that. Is it, is it something that's shared with the district? So we have SROs. Is it checked off a list that they've had de-escalation, trauma-sensitive school training, youth mental health, cultural sensitivity and/or bias? Are they, are they only coming into the buildings if they've checked off all of those?
Our goal would be to train up the SROs very similar to how we do teaching staff. It's overwhelming to do it all within a short period of time, so we stretch it out. But a checklist is actually where we're headed. That's part of the work we'll be doing next year.
How do you prioritize which one you do first?
What page is that on?
This is page.
Eight two.
It's nine of 21 of, on that, this thing, on the red light up there.
On the first. Like how do you, how do you prioritize which of?
Where is the list?
I mean, there's a lot and if there's, there's a lot to train and there's a lot of content, there's not a lot of time. How do you prioritize?
Part of it would be the team availability and aligning it with the staff rollout for PD for next year. Every single one, as I look at that, every single one is so important.
They're all top.
Yeah.
Okay, but you're going to probably have to choose something first.
Yeah, I'll work with the, the team that actually does the presentations. There are a few of these that are actually like the trauma-sensitive schools. We have five modules right now, so that's already ready to go and they can do that piece on their own. So I wouldn't have to work with the trainer on that. But the other ones, de-escalation, the NVCI training, that would be based on our staff that's available to do the training.
Well, and that's, I guess when I'm looking at it, I see a few things that I feel are more urgent than others. Not that bullying's not urgent, but you know, and then some could probably be, you know, together, could be, you know, put together as well. Yeah, they're all important.
Yeah.
I mean, they probably also overlap, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I got.
Andrew.
So it says GBPD shall ensure, ensure that the resource officer receives relevant training prior to or within 60 days of assignment. So once this contract is effective, will they have to sign off on at least some of, some training in all those areas within 60 days?
Oh gosh, I don't remember what that was. I'm going to have to look at notes unless anyone here can recall, was there a specific training that we said within 60 days they would complete and then the rest would be ongoing? I, I don't recall right now what that might have been. Unless that's more related to, from the Green Bay Police Department's training.
I see, well, it's, but it says may include, so then you wouldn't have to do, I mean.
I see, but if, if somebody has something different that you can recall.
You're still looking at B three under training.
Yeah.
Yep. But it's not so much about notes. I mean, we're not, I mean, we're not voting on notes next, next week or on, on verbal, verbal understandings, right? I mean, I guess it's, it's important to me if we're, if we're saying, you know, there's, we're, we're telling GBPD that you must ensure that they get the training. So that means maybe they can get it from us or maybe they have to get it from the PD. Unless we mean, like another way of writing it would be that GBAPS will provide training, but we didn't write that. We wrote that the police department will ensure that they get the training. So, and I, right?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Vicki, I can clarify. So the language was written so that the officers are given relevant training to be a school resource officer. And then if you keep reading, and ongoing joint training with school administrators. And that, that training is going to include the de-escalation, trauma-sensitive schools, youth mental health, cul- cultural sensitivity and/or bias.
Thank you. So I read that as, I, I mentioned the three-ring binder earlier. So what are our processes and procedures? That's the training that I, I think is what's being addressed in that.
So who, who decides when it, when it comes down to may include? Are we calling the shots on that or are, are they, do we direct?
Well, it's, it would be joint with the district and, and the PD.
So if the, if the PD feels that, well, we think they've had enough training on blank and we say, no, we think you need more training on, on blank and they say, no, we really, as officers, they're trained in, how does that get worked out?
I, I think the may include was in there because sometimes we pick up a different topic that we're going to be training our staff on and I wanted some flexibility to be able to ensure that the police department is a part of that training as well. I'll throw out an example, PBIS, it's been in the district quite a long time, but we've expanded it to multi-level systems of support district-wide. That's something we would train our SROs on along with our teaching staff. So I wanted that flexibility.
So that may gives you that.
If something changes, if we bring on another resource or intervention that we would want to train them on.
Oh, and for, for sure, we would want to say, you know, some kind of including but not limited to, but I guess I would probably want to put in writing that they must do training. Again, overlapping is, is fine. There are definitely no question, there's training that covers more of these things at once. But I just want to make sure that, you know, the de-escalation, trauma-sensitive, that that's not, not something that can, in a later discussion between the police department and the schools, say, oh, you know, as in police officer training in Wisconsin, they have, you know, eight hours of, of this, so, so we're good. That we're the ones saying, no, no, they're going to go to this.
Yeah, I see. Yeah.
Any other questions on the contract?
Yes.
So are we to assume that a lot of these SROs are coming in, they've already been in the schools or just, this is just extending the contract? I mean, is it like a whole different arrangement of, do they go to the different schools or are they in the same schools they were last year?
There will be some shifting around.
Okay. All right. And so do you hear from, so they've been in there already and in, in these positions, have they already had some of this?
Yeah.
Right?
Great question, yeah.
Okay. So then are they, do you hear from the officers that they are requesting any of this as more of a priority?
Yeah.
And what are you hearing?
Yeah. The ones I've talked to want to be a part of those trainings, as do their supervisors. It's, it's, a, a big part of it is using common language because they're hearing staff use it. And if we're working with the student, it would be important to use the same language and they would get that from the training. But even beyond that, the de-escalation strategies that we learn through NVCI, the, the police department is very interested in learning those skills too. They have their own de-escalation strategies that they want to learn as a police officer. NVCI is a little bit different, so.
Can you say what that, with?
Yeah, non-violent crisis intervention. I'm sorry.
And, and just one more. So would the, the de-escalation training, would that apply to students with special needs?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Christina?
I have two questions. Vicki, do you, and maybe this is more speculation and maybe you can't answer this 100%, but do you anticipate that the training protocol for, within this program will grow? Where do you see it going? Seems like you're kind of going in that direction, but just for clarity.
Yeah. We want to mimic what the teachers are learning. So if we bring new strategies to the teachers, we would do the same with the police officers. I would also add that through the evaluation next year, we might determine that we need some specific trainings for our SROs. We have researched the national SRO program. They have a lot of really good research-based trainings. So we would look into those as well.
Okay, okay. And if we do have parents who are concerned, right, may as a concern? How can, can you speak to how we can, we can be as, as a board, bringing their, their voice to the conversation, connecting with you, ensuring that they're part of this process?
Any, any specific concerns, the sooner we can hear about it, the better. We promise to address them. The best place to go obviously is the building principal. Chris Coller is also overseeing the program, so he would be a resource as well if, if parents or, or teachers wanted to reach out.
Sorry, I have one more question. In terms of the training, and I don't know, I don't remember the calendar year for the board, but do you give us another update at some point on? I would just, I would love to know at some point whether it's just informal or here, like this is what we've accomplished, here's what we've done, here's how it's gone.
I hope to, I hope to be by the, by the end of next school year, be able to provide you with the, along with Dr. Stramp, the program evaluation. Our committee will be meeting, we're, we're looking at quarterly meetings to continue looking at the process. And at that point, I should be able to share with you everything that's listed under the next steps.
Rhonda?
What is the likelihood of us having some of those comments before we vote on this contract from parents?
Michelle?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Gwen to my own look. I think that, that one of the important parts is that we have a responsibility to redact identifying data. I'm assuming that is the plan. So, and I don't know how far, it's Molly, right? Is Molly working on it? I don't know how far she's gotten on that because we had talked about it already. Recognizing the fact that the board may want to have that information, so it isn't something that, that we haven't talked about and started working on. The piece, the piece, to have it separated by themes is important. So if there are, in, in the data that Gwen provided, if there are certain themes that pop first that you can see, that might be the fastest way to start, you know, to, we can get at least X themes. So if you take a peek at those and those questions and those data points, that might be, you know, what fell into that to provide. Because some may be more concerning than others, not that, I'm, I'm not putting any weight on them, but that to get them to you as quickly as possible if there are certain things that just come out, stand out.
Our goal for all of the comments to have them kind of refreshed in the ways so that we don't have derogatory comments, we don't have explicatives, if I've said that correctly, particular names coming out. That was the end of May and we were hoping to bring everything out together at one point instead of piecemealing the section out. So we're on track to, for the end of May. We weren't on track to bring out another separate part and do that. We were requested for this part of the process to have them coded and to have things separated by polarity. So we're up to speed on that point, so.
Are there a lot of explicitives? Explicitives, are there a lot of explicitives?
I want to protect anyone being identified. I'm frankly less offended by the explicitives.
Right.
And also I want to point out that in the information we gave to parents, we did not say that your comments would be shared publicly. So, you know, they are trusting with the comments that, you know, they're bringing them forward that.
But publicly and to the school board are two different things and there are parents who have actually asked me personally if we would be reading them.
So I guess I would ask that question, if it's presented to the school board, does it not become public? I, I don't know.
I think there, I think, I think there's, there's a difference, there's two different things that could happen for very different purposes. I think one is, one is a board member or members asking to come in and look at the comments because, which you wouldn't maybe probably redact anything from, but. But obviously, obviously, if, if we were going to get a list, yes, then you would have to redact.
I don't need them in my hands. I would just like to read them.
Yeah, just stopping in and, yeah. And then you wouldn't have to redact anything because we wouldn't be going public. Certainly, anything publicly, yes, we'd have to remove names.
We probably still have to remove names and identifying information with respect, because it might be a pupil record or it could be an employee matter. So, we will have to remove those names. But, but.
So, why would there be, why would there be something that a board member couldn't see that, that administration could see?
Well, because you, i- if there's a complaint about an employee, you event, could be eventually the arbiter of that dispute or that complaint. So, we would not bring that forward at this point for the board to review so that you are impartial in protecting the employee's due process rights.
So, my hesitation before was, I'm thinking about parents and employees having, have, you know, shared their comments. And I just want to ensure that going out, that they will continue to contribute through their comments and not feel like.
Oh, and actually, to your point, there have been staff as well who assume we read, and that's why they write the comments in.
So.
They thought we did.
You'll work with Dr. Stramp tomorrow and?
Yeah, we'll look at it. I, I think that to, to Mr. Brecker's point, and that's, that could be probably the easiest way is to, to just have any board members who are interested in come in and read them on the, you know. And we've done that before with comments. Yeah, just to come in, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the contract? Okay, we're good.
This school, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to move on to the next one.
Please do.
Okay, very good.
This school year, we convened building leaders and board member, one board member to review current policy. We're looking at four forty-five and the rule and make recommendations. Again, using feedback from the committee. Policy draft was sent to the committee for review and I did get some really good feedback from the committee members. So, what you are seeing is four forty-five and.
Eighty-two point one.
Eight eighty-two point one.
Okay, let's take four forty-five first. Andrew, you had questions on?
Four forty-five?
Okay, and which of the documents are you?
Okay. First of all, I did, I found the answer to one of my questions in the, for the eight eighty-two one. I actually found that in the, in the contract. I was, the policy references, I remembered that we talked about a certain number of members on the interview panel. But the policy just said we would have representation. And so, that's, that's why I was getting mixed up. I saw in the contract that we have three out of the, three out of the, the seven.
Okay, so that's eight eighty-two.
That's eight eighty-two. Yeah, four forty-five, yes. So, I'm.
Okay, which of the three?
So, this is interviews by news media.
Are you on the policy or the rule?
The rule.
Okay, okay. It's the third one down.
So, news, news things can happen fast. I don't have a, I, I don't have a problem with principals working in collaboration with the Department of, of Public Relations. But does, as written, does it mean that an interview with a student is, is banned if the director of communications isn't available? Because it looks like that that could be strictly constructed there.
You could add, or his or her designee, because she does take vacation.
Right. But what if, I, I guess ultimately, does that mean, you know, hey, something's happening on an interview? Principal can't authorize that if we can't reach the, the department?
I don't read it as, the department has veto rights. Just says working in collaboration.
Well, interviews will have been granted only, only if they cover, and if, and if such coverage has been approved. And that's with, with the building principal working in collaboration with the.
So, the building principal approves and consults with the Department of Public.
But ultimately, it's the principal's decision. Okay, I'm good with that.
But we can add in, or his or her designee to recognize.
I think that's, that's important, yeah.
To be one and be two, we can add that in.
Okay. Anything else? Rhonda?
I am on, I'm in the rule. Yep, the red, six, it's E, E and F. I'm sorry, I can't even see a page number. Is it the top?
Look at the top.
Where?
It's in the second.
It's not on the. Okay, sorry, page two out of five, two. Reasonable and appropriate attempt shall be made to notify the parents or guardians of any student who is interviewed by a law enforcement official on school premise during the school day. But that doesn't commit to it, right? Or?
It commits to the attempts
Okay.
to call the parents.
So, so students can be interviewed by a police officer without their guardian there?
That's correct. That's, that is the law.
That's the law?
Correct.
On school property?
Correct.
And that's a state law?
No, it's, it would be in the Attorney General's Guide interpreting police authority to interview students. A parent cannot, parents do not have to give permission for a student to be interviewed by a police officer.
Is there any separation for local municipalities to interpret that as needed? Is there anything where a school district can actually, is that a guideline? Is that, but do they give local, I mean, local government or governance board? Do they give any, any autonomy to local governance boards at all on that?
With respect to whether students can be interviewed without parent permission?
Yeah.
We cannot require, we cannot require parent permission for, they could simply take students off premises and interview them. We don't have to give parent permission for the interview of students.
That's ugly.
Go ahead.
And that's to say whether the reason they're being interviewed, there were, there was some delineation between an infraction that occurred in school versus out of school. So, these rules apply to both of those situations.
Right. The police department could come in and say they want to interview a student. We could say, we're not giving you permission to interview the student. And they could simply say, then we'll move the interview down to the police department and interview the student there.
And, and that's any police department? Any municipality?
Outside of ours, our jurisdiction?
Who would have jur, well, who would have?
But let's say it was DePere. They couldn't come into our school and do that, or could they?
I don't think so.
I don't.
Another jurisdiction? Even if our student did something in DePere?
They have to work in coordination with our police department.
Well, is it the school or is it the residence of the student? Why if it's someone who's school choices?
Sorry.
Someone from DePere who's school choices.
Can we take a, can we take a break so I can find the answer?
Yeah, and I think we should figure it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's a good one. Good question.
So, is this a serious break?
Yeah, let's just take a serious break.
This is a serious break.
We've been at this for over two hours. We'll take a five-minute break.
Is that enough time, Melissa?
Yep.
Okay. Eight twenty-five on that clock.
They're all the same today. All right, we'll come back to our meeting.
Melissa, yeah. Go ahead, Melissa, you can tell us.
Tried to perform legal research under a five-minute timeline, and I want to make sure that you have an accurate answer. So, I'm going to take that back. I, I can answer affirmatively that law enforcement does not need parent permission to interview students. That I know for sure. Whether law enforcement from other jurisdictions can come into our schools and demand to interview our students, that I need, I need to go back and research.
So, I have one more question about, it's right under there. And it's three, on page three, it's law enforcement, I'm sorry, no, two. Law enforcement and interviews requested by school administration. So, if the administration is requesting that interview themselves, then does that still require the parent? I mean, can you have the parent there and not there? Can you actually operate that interview without parents being made aware?
So, if you go back to section one on the previous page, all of those parameters apply to whether the interview is requested by school administration or whether it's not related to school. And one E says reasonable and appropriate attempts will be made to notify the parents.
Okay. So, if, if there's a principal that wants the, the, the police to handle something, we don't have to contact the parents, or we don't have to have a parent present? If it's school-initiated, if it's school-building leadership-initiated?
Correct.
Or any other administrator? Can the, can the parent or guardian, can you operate and do that interview without the parent or guardian there?
Yes, you can.
And that's?
It's still a law enforcement matter, and we cannot require parent permission for a law enforcement investigation. And that's in the Attorney General's opinion.
It doesn't mean the child has to talk. A lot of parents tell their kids not to talk to police officers, and that's the way families are managing.
And, and the parent can't invoke that for the child. The child has to invoke it themselves.
Right. They have to do it, but I'm just saying they can tell that.
Correct. But if they don't reach the parent, it's a moot point anyway.
But if the parent has to talk.
Yeah.
The kid can say, I mean, I'm not saying it's the best.
Right, but if they, if they don't know to do that.
Right.
Okay. That's unreal. I don't know, I just didn't know that, that that's actually the case. They're kids.
Call Josh Call, Attorney General.
Well, I mean, that's obviously the next thing.
Any other questions or concerns on the policy?
Go ahead, you can comment, you can continue to look.
Okay. I, I know that this has been a really deep conversation, this document and this policy. Melissa worked really hard on it. We spent a lot of time on it. Teams looked at it, really wanting, and principals were included and, and others to make sure that we did what we could within. I, I would offer, I feel what this policy represents is what we could do within the framework of the law and, and be as responsive to families and children as possible. That, that's, having sat at the table, that's how it certainly appeared to me, to listen carefully and listen to the legal counsel that sat at the table. So, I, I appreciate that this, all the, all the work and all the, all the thoughtfulness that went into it. People were really trying to, to provide as much opportunity for kids as possible so that they, you know, we want, we want to keep kids safe and we don't want to subject them to things. But there are times that law enforcement has a responsibility as well. And so, it's, it's, that's what this document, I think, represents, is a lot of thoughtful, hard work on the part of the team to try to make sure that we could put into language what, what we could, what we could and still be in compliance with the law.
Okay, any other questions on four forty-five? Okay, we'll move that forward. And then the next one was the eight eighty-two. Andrew, did you, you answered your own questions on that one, having read the policy?
On, on one area, I might, I might have more, but I'm not raising my hand yet.
Okay, does anyone else? Brenda?
On page four of five.
Of which document?
The eight eighty-two compare.
Compare, okay.
Under student discipline, the E section, what is it, three E, I think?
Yes.
The resource officer shall not have responsibility for discipline in the school. And I know there's, we, there's somewhere else, and I couldn't find it, that we talked about. They're still allowed to, you know, to correction of students doing things and stuff like that. This almost makes it sound like they can't do anything. And I know we said we would, and like I said, we, we said they'd. So, I guess I'm asking, what, when you say not allowed to do discipline, what are you specifically referring to?
So, two thi, three or four things were going on at the same time, drafting the contract and the policies. We tried to make sure that the policy language mirrored the contract. We updated the contract to reflect that concern. We did not update the language in this policy. So, we will go back and copy and paste that language from the contract that addressed that concern into the policy.
All right. Yeah, that's great, thanks. Anything else? I'm hearing sighs, but no, sorry. That's okay. Andrew?
Okay, so, I, I guess maybe this is the, maybe this is the time and place for a, or in preparation for two weeks from now, a, a decision. Since we are on the policy portion, maybe this is where we talk more about issuance of, of truancy tickets. That's, so that's in there in our policy. The proposed policy says, on page three, number ten, issuance of truancy ticket will only be utilized when all other truancy interventions have not resulted in compliance with Wisconsin compulsory school attendance laws. One, one area that is important to me to see in policy is, at a bare minimum, I would like to take out the truancy ticket for people who are, who are tardy to class and have not even been truant for whole, whole periods and whole, whole days. Is this, is this where that would go?
That would be in the attendance policy.
Okay. So, what's the difference with what's in here?
Well, the attendance policy speaks to the procedures that we employ to address truancy. So, this just speaks to when a truancy ticket will be utilized. And it doesn't speak to the actual truancy process and procedures. I believe it's policy four twenty.
Okay, but this is, this is talking about our policies for what the S R Os do and don't do, right? It, like, if it, if it's, if it was fully covered under, in the, in the policy four twenty, then what is this part? What's the significance of, of it being added here?
So, they issued the truancy tickets. So, this is the implementation of when truancy tickets would be issued. The attendance policy speaks to the process and procedures for truancy. That's not addressed in this policy.
What do you want it to say in your?
Well, I, I, I guess I would like it to prevent to the greatest extent that we can with the understanding that an officer can probably, you know, look at, look at the law and interpret, make an interpretation and write a, a ticket. But I, I thought maybe ten would include that at a, you know, at a minimum, you know, the truancy tickets shall not be issued if a student has not been truant more than a certain amount of time.
That's in the truancy policy.
But yeah, what you're saying, though, is in this policy and rule, they're upholding the
Our truancy.
The, the, the attendance rule and policy.
Correct.
So, that's where the language would go
Correct.
for consideration of, okay.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look and compare the policies, and then I reserve the right for more questions in, in two weeks.
Can I just add something? Go ahead. So, your question is what needs to be done in order to change that, right? Is that what you're asking?
Right, but since we're, since we're posted for this policy right now, I was. Right, but since we're, since we're posted for this policy right now, I was more specifically saying, is, is this the place to do it? And perhaps the answer is to make an amendment to a different, to a different policy, maybe?
Okay. And you're going to do that?
Well, I'm gonna, I'll look at the policy 420, and then if-
I'm sorry, it's not 420. 431. Student attendance, and then 431 rule of student attendance and truancy procedures.
And when were those last updated?
Recently.
Can you-
June 18th, 2018.
Read while we're defining truancy?
In here.
In that policy?
It would be the state definition.
State definition.
Mm-hmm. Do you want me to sit in there?
Okay.
There's the definition here. I'll find it. You keep it. Okay. When I presented to the board, I provided that, so I could dig through Neptune and find it.
Okay. You're saying that our policy on truancy is dictated by what the state requires?
Correct.
So changing it, how do we begin to even talk about that if it's the state law?
Yeah.
But then if they-
Definition of truancy, not how-
I'm not prepared to talk about truancy this evening.
Okay, okay. Because my question is whether or not the definition of truancy needs to be part of the professional development and clarification, rather than-
I see.
You know, rather than the, the tardies that are getting nailed. Okay? All right. Any other questions on? Where are we?
882.1.
We ready to move that forward? Okay. We'll move that forward. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
We have chemistry resources.
Joining me at the table is Mike Fries.
Welcome, Mike.
Back from Aspen.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I represent curriculum coordinator, Ms. Alyssa Hoffman, and the team that worked on the chemistry resources that are brought forward for your consideration this evening. As you may recall, our chemistry curriculum was rewritten and aligned to the next generation science standards and the updated Wisconsin standards back in 1617. At that time, however, there were no redesigned or updated standards, reference resources available for consideration, so the team journeyed on without. The textbook we currently have in use has a copyright date of 2005, which might have been Mr. Van den Hoeghe's senior year, or something like that. Just kidding. Close though, right? Yeah. There you go. So we, this year, or for this governance request, the resources that they were able to evaluate come from the future, they have copyright dates of 2020. So we're excited about the fact that these were built from the ground up and aligned to the next generation science standards. The online resources connected to this are very, much more interactive and robust than in these previous editions. All our chemistry teachers did have input in the process. Building representatives came down to the district office back in December for a full day of exploration together and revisiting and ensuring that they understood the task at hand. Samples were provided back to their buildings for evaluation and rotation among all colleagues. They also had the opportunity to participate in February and March sessions, after-school work sessions, where they explored the online resources. And so the recommended adoption is Inspire Chemistry, a McGraw-Hill product. We do have professional learning tenetively set aside for June pending your approval of the resource, where they will come in and work with the publishing associate who helps ensure an understanding of how to, how to work through all the aspects of the resource and successful implementation of the resource in support of their teaching and learning practices.
Questions, comments?
Is this for general chemistry or advanced chemistry?
This is, yeah, this is going to be for our, our standard chemistry class. It's not our conceptual chemistry, nor is it for the advanced placement chemistry.
Okay.
So a college preparatory chemistry class, third-year science class. I would also offer that textbook publishers have gotten wise to the idea of folding in physical editions with online access, so there's not a lot of monkeying around with, you know, the one, either or, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. They've gotten, they've made them all pretty much a package deal at this point. So we keep looking for efficiencies there relative to our progress and technology proficiencies as well. But in this case, the recommendation is a print and digital access for each student.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Now, the IB diploma program math and business management resources?
Yes, tonight, I'm also representing the, the West High School International Baccalaureate Program, and their IB coordinator, Shannon Preston, and principal, Michelle Jacobson, as well as Eric Kahn, who from our department helped work with their team to make sure that they, they were able to meet the expectations related to governance approval for courses and resources. Two things are mentioned here. One of them is that previously this school year, the school board approved the analysis and approaches standard level course. At that time, as you might recall, the International Baccalaureate had laid down an expectation of implementation for the fall without many details beyond that. Subsequent to that, that process, the IB has provided more information about the new course curriculum, and the West math department took a look at the actual content outlined in the HL course as further released. And so they are recommending, and we've brought forward curriculum analysis, an opportunity to include both SL and HL in the IB math analysis and approaches. Both courses can be taught simultaneously depending on enrollment. And so I'm representing that request for approval of the opportunity to offer the HL, the higher-level course, as well.
Questions, comments? Andrew?
Okay, so that is a, that is a very IB applications, SL, and IB analysis, HL. That is a, an extremely wide range of math to, to be saying that we're doing both in the same class at the same time? I mean, Spanish III, Spanish IV, you know, okay, because there's always continuous review in a foreign language, and then maybe you have a higher-level project here, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's, it's impossible in math, but there's a, there's a lot going on in that HL course, and there's also some, some, some key differences between, I'm just wondering how, how this is really going to work. It's a case where I would, my first, my first thought would be, I would rather spend the money to have two very small sections, because the courses are so different, where there's other times I would say, yeah, let's combine them.
If I may, Mr. Becker, if everybody wanted a glance at the topics at a glance, I can tell you the specific topics that are included in the HL as opposed to the SL. In our course overview, where it goes through number and algebra, the SL course has all of the number and algebra topics except for the last three bullets, partial fractions, counting principles, and complex numbers. Those three would be included in an HL piece in that category, for instance. The third bullet, functions, and the final two bullet, functions, are additions for the HL. In geometry and trigonometry, it's the fourth bullet and the last two bullets. In the area of probability and statistics, it's the final bullet, which includes continuous random variables. In the area of calculus, it's the last two bullets, first-order differential equations and Maclaurin series. I apologize for wading into the area related to the decision about the size of a section or running a section. I'm relaying what was shared with me based on what the West team had to say, so maybe that can be stricken from the formal record and be treated more as anecdotal conversation, and I'm sure that they would not recommend a decision to cluster staff something without having further conversation, because I know that the school board has expressed interest in navigating matters related to that. But my understanding of the specific difference between the SL and the HL are the bullets that I identified. The other piece related with this particular IB request was, earlier the curriculum documents had been approved for business management, which will be taught by Mr. Jose Aron at West, I presume. He did serve on the evaluation committee to, to evaluate the resources that go along with that course. That is an IB-specific course. It's kind of cool that it gets, also brings in career technical education opportunities with an IB designation, so it's kind of nice that that'll be included as well. And so there, there are not CEDs or course overviews provided for that, that's simply the, the resource request associated with that, which would be entitled Stimson's Business and Management for the IB Diploma for the students taking that course for next year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And you're stuck with me for the last item here, it's a-
Proposed course essential documents-
Yes.
-to personalize your path, explore to a course.
Yes, thank you. In our sixth grade schedule, there's an opportunity for students at, at our middle schools and our K8s, as a general statement, to explore, and to have an opportunity for exploratory block overall. This particular course was a topic that was brought forward for, for consideration based on interest of principals, of school counselors, as well as of teachers. In summary, this is a suggestion and a recommendation for governance consideration, to take a look at kind of introduction to academic and career planning alongside some of the expectations associated with our Avid curriculum that takes a full effect starting in seventh grade as an elective at a number of our schools. While students have many elective course options to select from in grade seven and eight, their schedule in grade six typically includes an exploration of a variety of content areas, including art foundations, exploring family consumer science, intro to health and wellness, intro to technology and computer literacy. But because of some circumstances related to scheduling or staffing at given schools in a given year, not all students always have these same exact options. And so we wanted to take a look at what would be an opportunity for a course that could offer an introduction to academic career planning and build interest towards making different elective choices once they get to seventh grade. And so folks came together to put together this course proposal, connecting some of the Avid expectations, as well as career technical education, work readiness standards. And so our different middle schools, upon your approval of this course, will be looking at where it might be ready to field test or pilot next year for the first time.
So it becomes part of the exploratory block in sixth grade?
It would become part of, it would be located within the sixth grade experience in the exploratory block, yes.
And so are we taking anything out, or are we shortening all of the other exploratory blocks?
No, my understanding is not a shortening of classes, but there are, there have been circumstances over the years where not all schools have been able to run all exploratory options, and we found ourselves, or our schools have found themselves stuck as the school year got started, trying to figure out how to navigate what may have been an unfilled, or unstaffed position, or what have you, or late retirement, or something like that. And so they were trying to look at what would be a value-add opportunity, what might bring to some of our schools that run into this once in a while, this particular opportunity. And so they started looking at something like this, and they knew that for it to even be a possibility to run in the fall, there needed to be some, an understanding, you know, here in May, in advance of the course, so that schools could explore possibly running it as a section in the fall if they needed to.
And is the intention then to have it be in every one of our middle schools, or, or an option depending on each middle school's needs or how things are filling out?
Yes. My understanding is more of an option. Our understanding at this point is that the schools that are most interested in looking at it for the fall would be Edison, Eldo, Lombardi, and Washington, potentially.
I would offer that one of the important parts of this, for me, as I looked at this and reflected on it, would be to monitor if this makes a difference in terms of children's choices as they start to move through middle school, if they see themselves in pathways different then, and so I would assume that's been, you already are thinking about what that evaluation process would be, especially if not all schools would be engaged right away in this particular opportunity, if that makes sense to-
Sure. And I apologize, I can inquire, I know Lori and Aubrey from the college career readiness team-
Yeah.
-were, were very much involved in this.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? This looks good, I like the content of this course.
Yeah, it's, it's in very, yeah, worth exploring.
I like that, I like that. And we're not stuck with you, Mike, we appreciate your input.
Thank you, everyone.
Would you like to stick around for grade promotion?
And, as well as the teams that worked with Mike, and such great work.
All right, and our last item will be grade promotion retention acceleration policy.
We are bringing forward revisions to policy 345.4, minor revisions to rule one of 345.4, and a new rule, rule two of 345.4 for grade acceleration procedures. Wisconsin law requires a school board to adopt written policies with respect to the promotion of students, and from time to time, students may need to be retained in a grade level, or it may be suggested that a student be advanced in a subject or a whole grade. The district's policy with respect to these matters was last revised in 2005 and addressed only the issue of grade advancement. More specifically, no existing policy or rule address the issue of subject matter or whole grade level acceleration. As such, revisions are being proposed to policy 345.4 and rule one and rule two, which is being proposed to be adopted.
Hearing none, we'll move those forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes Teaching and Learning's work session. Great. Thanks, Katie. Next we have organizational support work session, that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Okay, so we have one discussion item under business and finance, and that would be the Safe Walk and Bike Green Bay update.
This is just intended to give you a quick update, not about, not to address content on the plan itself, but to give a quick update on the timeline that we have to undertake in order to complete this project. So as many of you are aware, we sent a draft plan to you on May 1st in the update, and we've been working at breakneck speed here over the last month or so to take a look at this draft and get everything going. The focus of this timeline is to ensure that all stakeholders have a part, an opportunity to address concerns that they have with the plan. Some key events that we are looking at is the fact that we are going to be doing, we'll be having a revised draft, hopefully issued on May 13th, followed by a public meeting on May 14th, which will take place at Brown County Library, lower level. We'll then be following that by an advisory committee meeting, the last of our seven advisory committee meetings. We'll review those public comments, pass those on through our consultant tool design and We Bike, ETC LLC. And a final draft will be completed hopefully by May 29th, Wednesday, and delivered to all of you, including joint staff, city council, school board, and the Green Bay, City of Green Bay Planning Commission. That final draft will be presented at a work session on Monday, June 3rd, presented to the Plan Commission on June 10th, and hopefully presented before you again on June 17th in its final form, followed by the City of Green Bay Common Council on the 18th, and if successfully adopted, we will then hold a joint press conference, hopefully in a neutral location, to celebrate the success of the plan. Well- Well, not the success, but the adoption of the plan. The success remains to be seen. Any questions?
Questions? All right. Rhonda?
Are you receiving the comments that you need?
You know, I've been pleased with, we've received a lot of comments recently, and I just want to be encouraging with that. Things started out a little bit slow, but that comment sheet is going to remain open, and we'll continue to work with our consultants to make sure all those get incorporated. Thank you, that's a great question. Yes?
Jeremy, being new, I apologize. Could you give me a 30-second elevator speech on what you hope that this is going to accomplish, or what's the overall outcome?
The goal of the, or the Safe Walk and Bike Green Bay Plan is a collaboration between the City of Green Bay and our district to establish the first-ever citywide bike and pedestrian plan for Green Bay, as well as a Safe Route School Plan for 38 schools in the district. The goal of that is to ensure that all citizens at every age level and ability level are safely able to walk and bike in the city and use active transportation.
Perfect, thank you.
That was really good. I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on this. I walk my children every day to school across Webster Avenue. It is a death trap every day, and it was actually the first thing that got me involved in civic duty and civic engagement in our community. So thank you, because there is much success, but we have much work to do.
Thank you so much. It's been a privilege.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, then we have for discussion and public comment, under Business and Finance. First, we have the Model 3 4K per pupil allocation.
And Terry was serving the capacity of a executive director and working with the 4K implementation, and so that she has the historical background and current application as well.
Thank you, I'm grateful to be here this evening. Our four-year-old kindergarten programming began in Green Bay area public schools in 2009 with all three of the Wisconsin Department of Public Education instruction models. A model 1 refers to a program offered in locations within a current Green Bay area public school. A model 2 refers to classrooms which Green Bay area public school district rents. And a model 3 refers to classrooms located within a community-based setting, such as childcare centers, parochial sites, and the wildlife sanctuary. Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction required that districts include community-based settings, such as childcare centers and parochial sites, through a Model 2 or a Model 3. We currently have 24 Model 1 classrooms and 10 Model 3 classrooms. In the fall of 2012, we were approached regarding a desire to partner to offer a nature-based four-year-old kindergarten program. As a result of that, a planning committee was formed, which included UWGB members, community members, a substitute teacher, naturalists, and the Director of the Wildlife Sanctuary, in addition to the Director of Preschool Programs and myself. As a result, we created a planning timeline, in particular aligned with the open enrollment windows, and to successfully set up the ability to enroll students and begin offering nature-based programming in 2013. So we presented to the school board on December 10th, 2012, and the board approved moving forward with either a Model 2 or a Model 3 at the December 17th, 2012 meeting, to allow the City of Green Bay to determine which model they were interested in partnering around. We took that presentation then, as a result, to the Green Bay City Council Park Department meeting on January 9th, and it was presented by Donnie Kramer, the Director of the Parks and Rec Program, who shared both models with the planning committee. The planning committee approved moving both models forward to the Green Bay City Council for their approval, and that presentation was held February 5th, 2013. Donnie again presented the comparison of both models and details of the proposal and presentation, and the city council voted at that time to move forward with a Model 3.
And the attachment that you have in Neptune, shown on our screen, with this year's numbers, the 1819, the locations, the number of sections, and the district's expenses, and for each student there, we have a subsidy of $2,300 a student. The proposal we bring this evening is to increase that for, beginning for the 2019-2020 school year, to $2,500 per student. You'll also see on that diagram what the cost is, will be for the district, and there's some subnotes on the bottom there regarding staffing, specific to what staffing, according to our director, we pay for and are on our payroll. So it's in addition to the cost that you see there.
Should that be the YWCA?
Definitely.
Okay, just, I don't want the YM to get excited, they're gonna be studying.
Other questions?
So the increase of the 200 per student proposed, the money is coming from where?
Our 1920 budget.
So this is entirely, entirely our decision, how much, or is this based on something the state's doing?
The latest that I've read is that the state is not recommending moving forward with any 4K language to a budget change, which I think for us is good, because of what I would be concerned about, a potential reduction. As far as the rate is concerned, we, as Terry has walked through the history, have not offered a Model 3 increase, and relative to revenue limits and some local school district per student, we thought it was appropriate to make the recommendation to the board to increase it by $200 a student for the upcoming year.
And that's for every level of Model 3s, everything? It's not just the Oak School, it's everything?
Yes.
So this is a presentation, are you, or it's a proposal? Is this something that, I'm just, I'm just kind of blanking on this, are we going to accept this? Have we accepted it? I don't, when would we? We would, at some point?
You could at the motion, yeah.
So you're asking for us to go ahead and say?
To consider the increase for all Model 3 sites.
So can we walk through, just logistically, that money then doesn't stay with us, it goes to the facility, the schools? Can you just walk through that, how that works?
Sure.
We don't manage that necessarily, we hand it over to?
It's first based on third Friday enrollment counts that we conduct for the state, and once we receive their roster, we send out quarterly payments for the year then, this year, that those payments equal $2,300 per student. We treat it the same way as any other purchase service, and that is with a vendor, where we are invoiced and cut a check to them to perform services that we are requesting, in this particular case, 4K instruction, for half-days, Monday through Thursday, and then student, student time, or excuse me, parental on Fridays.
We also have agreements on file with all of our community-based partners, which does lay out requirements, such as having a licensed teacher, following our approved district curriculum and assessments, and meeting the DPI mandated requirements, such as the mandated reporter training, et cetera.
Okay, and so they take the money, and then basically, we do not manage the employees. Can you go into that, just so it's out there and?
They, in the Model 3, the community partner employs the staff, and so they receive the per pupil amount that we have laid out in the agreement. And then, again, there are parameters within the agreement that both parties have committed to, and they then manage their budget.
Who determines what salary the teachers get?
That would be the community agency.
As well as the benefits?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Correct. Thank you.
The only, the only way legally that we could, legally we're forbidden from telling a contractor about what to do with pay and benefits. So the only, if we wanted to, if we wanted to have control over those matters, the only way to do it would be to convert it to a Model 1 or Model 2. All right. Other questions?
Well, actually, I just, since we're here, so is it the City of Green Bay, or the Encompass Daycare, or the YWCA, or the PSC3? Do they then have their own, you know, does the school district actually, in regards to their safety processes, policies, and processes, do they have their own? Do we bring ours in? Is it, how consistent is it with what the district's doing, or is it more fluid?
I would say it's yes and. So we do provide professional development and support and collaboration. You know, our current Director of Preschool Programs works very closely, Chris Coller I know is available, and, and part of that content is provided during the collaboration times that we have with the agencies. They also involve us in conversations around those practices and protocols. I remember many meetings where we focused on how we would support successful bathroom and procedures at the wildlife sanctuary, for example, working collaboratively together. So each community agency does have the ability to differentiate based on their context, and based on their philosophies and resources, but also collaborate with the school district around best practices and recommendations. And they typically do ask and work very well collaboratively with the school district. It is not a requirement.
We set certain parameters, and then the organization meets those parameters within the context of their, their providership.
Okay, thank you.
So do, do district, but district policies apply? All of them?
We have to go policy by policy by policies.
I mean, we would, unless we, I mean, certainly there's some that wouldn't make any sense, because they wouldn't apply to buildings that aren't ours, probably, but, but generally speaking, our policies would apply unless we excluded in the contract?
So our, our new policies, we just did on state, safety and security in the 700s.
Uh huh.
Those all apply, because those Model 3 sites fall under the new legislation. So we were required to do site assessments, they're required to have the same procedures in place, those sorts of things, under the school safety legislation. And then a lot of the Model 3 sites have their own regulations. For example, Encompass needs to be, they have a five-star rating, they meet all of the requirements for their five-star rating, there, there are licensing rules that they need to follow in order to be certified as a daycare provider as well.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move that forward. Next item is board compensation.
Thank you.
The school board member compensation expenses policy, we have to review it every April, and so it's just up here, if there's anything board members want to change, I'm not recommending anything at this point.
I am, so I have a suggestion. I'm, before we throw it open to discussion, that might end up in the same place and just a lot more discussion to get there. I think we haven't, we haven't changed board member compensation in, we haven't changed the amount in, I mean, 15 years, many, many years, more than?
It's never been changed since I've been.
Oh, way before, it was way before.
It's before me.
The formula was changed, when I was first on the board, and when you were first on the board, we were paid a certain amount.
So it was, so it was very quickly after we were both on the board, like 90, so it must have been 99 that we changed it to a monthly amount.
Right.
Probably 90, 99, or 2,000 at the latest.
So 20 years. Yes.
So, it's see the, okay, so I think there's, I think there's a legitimate place for a discussion about, given the amount of the workload, the amount of, you know, the ratio of size of the district to number of, of members, I think there is actually a, that ratio is much higher for the Green Bay School Board than it is for our other elected bodies. However, that being said, I think, I don't think it would be appropriate to make a change without knowing what's happening in the, the state budget, so I'd like to propose that we say that we reviewed it for April, but then bring the topic back, revisit the topic at the, during the budget cycle for the board, for possible changes. That'd be my suggestion.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I like that. Andrew and I have talked about this, I think, I mean, it's not about my pay, but it's about a barrier to getting people to be interested in doing this work. It is a big job, it takes a lot of time, and for folks who are already working two jobs, or even a full-time job, to do this on top of it and to not be compensated, not that we're not compensated for our time, but I just, I think there is an equity lens here and something worth considering.
And if, depending how things are with the state budget, maybe we'll find in October that this is the, the year, and maybe we'll decide to save it for the next state budget. But I think it, I think a lot of times, just, we've just said, no, let's, let's not, let's not touch this right now, and just move it on. So I think, so this would be, just assumed to be part of the discussion again in October, during the budget cycle. Okay.
Can you, Sandy, can you put that so we don't forget? Thanks.
I'm gonna put John Cash on the spot here, I saw him nodding very discreetly about this. Did I see that correctly? Do you care to share anything, I mean, do you have some opinion about that?
I think it's appropriate for the amount of time, for the reasons you all stated, so waiting for the budget, and to have a serious discussion about it.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
And I, as I recall, because we've talked about this a few times.
And I, as I recall, because we've talked about this a few times in the past, the intent of the compensation is not necessarily as a salary, that you make money on the board, but it's to compensate people who have to get childcare for meetings, people who have to take off work, take a personal day, you know, to, to do some of their work. I think that was the intention of that, and we, I don't have, we haven't done it recently, but when we, when we've looked at comparisons of how boards pay their board members, it is all over the map, from zero to, you know, higher than what we, what we pay. So I think we just, I don't know that we can use comparisons to make a decision, I think we just have to make a decision, and we'll, we can do that in October.
That's all about to know. Do we have any idea of what other districts do as far as compensating, say, their board president? I'm just curious about this differently. I, I don't know anything about that. Does anyone have any knowledge?
In fact, I'm sure some do.
Yeah. Because there's a, there's a huge, there's a huge difference in the time commitment between board members and-
Free time in October, talk about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that? Then we'll move forward to the board budget.
And that is included, I think the, one of the things, looking at the advertising, the advertising budget has gone up, partly for the superintendent search, partly, and I don't, I left my notes at home, that because we're including as much as we include now in our meeting notices, are, we pay by the line in terms of all the meeting notices. So by including the closed session at the end of that, we're, we're paying for that, but I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. In addition, then, the closed captioning is, again, it's, it's a meeting, length of meeting related. I also, I know, we had a question about going to conferences, professional development. I had Sandy increase that to seven thousand, to give us the option if we wanted to allow board members to make more choices, and, and give every board member a stipend for conferences. I think we probably, I was thinking that should be something that we talk about as a separate item, in terms of how we make those decisions around, you know, what conferences are, are acceptable to go to. But anyway, so that's in there, so that we can, if we do decide to divvy it up, we've got an even thousand dollars per board member. Otherwise, I think-
Would that cover the, would that cover all the, what's the normal cost of one board member to state conference?
That's about it, yeah.
A thousand dollars?
Because that's, our budget has always, we've, we've budgeted for seven board members to go to the state convention, so seven thousand dollars would, so a thousand dollars a person would cover the state convention attendance.
Yes, I'd like to see people be able to have a modest, a modest additional item in addition to the state conference, and not have to not go to the state conference. I was, my thought was maybe, and I'm, I'm not talking about a lot, I'm talking about maybe, I thought maybe the, if we did the equivalent of the state, state conference plus three hundred, but with the idea that we're not necessarily, you wouldn't just go to thirteen hundred dollars of pick your own, but that you could access the three hundred even if you went to the state conference. So I guess that, I would maybe suggest that as a change, which would potentially add twenty-one hundred, but in reality, some won't do it, some don't go to state, and so it would probably be a line item that would usually be under, underspent, but I guess that would make it, I guess that would make it ninety-one hundred theoretically.
And this would start next year?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I have a separate question.
So, are you proposing that, or?
I guess I'm, I'm, yeah, that would be my proposal.
I think even two fifty would be, maybe three hundred.
Are board members interested in adding? Adding that?
So there would be a thousand dollars to go to state, and then if you want to do something else, you'd have two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars to do something else. Could you take that thousand dollars and use it for something else, or is it only for the state?
Well, that's what he was-
I like only for the state, because the reality is, some people don't do the state, and that's okay, but I, the, to do an extra, the extra three hundred or whatever, would give some, some flexibility, but not just completely scattering it out there. I, I mean, I think there should be an encouragement for people to, to go to state when, when possible. And, again, it does help the budget that, because in reality, not also having go to the state, then it's a budget line item that's going to be a bit underspent, too.
So you still have a thousand dollars allocated, if you don't go to the state, then where does that money go, then, is what you're saying?
Well, then, that's, basically, every year, we're just, we just are, but it's, but you have to allocate it so that it doesn't become impossible to send everyone.
So would it be entirely possible to say, here's twelve fifty?
Well, we could, but I, I guess, I, I prefer the idea of going to state being the standard, plus having some extra, that's, that's my preference.
I mean, I think you can do both, I mean, you can say that, that we would like to see state, but if there is something outside of that, and it's a, you could bring, you could bring that forward for consideration, if there were to happen, I don't even know what that would look like, but perhaps if there was a specific thing that could be considered, or not saying it, but I, I don't have a problem with that, but I do think if there is something, people should be given the flexibility to at least be considered, if there is something. Sorry, it's getting late, I'm getting tired.
The other thing with the smaller amount is, I would, you know, if we're talking about, if we're talking about an additional three hundred, I would, I would hope that we would have a, you know, we know what state conference is all about, and three hundred is a small enough figure that I would think something would have to be really far removed from making sense, before we would start questioning each other's decisions to go to a, a thing. I mean, I, now, if thirteen hundred, people might feel like they have to ask more questions, maybe, I-
What if the thousand dollars that we would use for a state convention, we could also designate that if you aren't able to go to state, there are a lot of other WASB conferences through the year that are quite good, to allow people to go to those instead of state convention, make that choice, and then the three hundred would be, or two fifty, whatever we decide, would be, you know, your choice.
Like the dyslexia conference that I would go to.
Right, right, yeah.
Right.
So this might seem, we're gonna, I mean, we can talk about it again when we vote next, next week.
Okay.
Other, other questions, comments on board budgets?
Where has, I think about our devices, so the, mine is six years old, if I don't have it plugged in, I, I don't know, is that something that we have traditionally taken out of a board budget, or is the, you know, and somebody's offered me one of the computers that the rest of you have, because Ed's was apparently different, but the screen gets a lot smaller, and so I'd rather have an old device with a bigger screen than to have that small screen. So I'm just wondering, is this a board budget item, or do our devices come from someplace else?
Technology?
It comes out of-
Mysteries, I think, we've dealt with for years.
Rotation.
It is, it is, and so, yeah, we have to take a look at what's available regarding funding for this, but if there is a rotation schedule, these are old, we agree.
So that's not, that's not an item that we would budget for in our board budget, it would come out of the-
No, it comes out of the rotation.
Okay.
It sounds like, Eric, that you would like maybe some other consideration right now with that.
Well, no, because I did talk to some of the technology about it, and they said, oh, we'll get you one of the devices that everybody else has, and I said, well, that one's, that screen is smaller, I'd rather have an old device with a bigger screen than your device in a small screen.
It has some friends. I got half.
You get used to it.
Yeah, as all of you, both, you know, all glasses on.
Well, I don't need them to see.
Oh, hey, if these eyes can read it.
I was going to say.
You were going to say that.
I have an appointment with my optometrist coming up, so.
I just have one question.
Yes, Amanda?
Can you just clarify what's happening with the recording of the meetings in the future? New equipment, who's recording, what that is? Can you just go over that? Because, I mean, it's mentioned, some of it's mentioned in here, but like, what is, again, what's the?
Can you come and share that information? I know we had camera coroner come over.
Yeah, and it was, it was a while ago, yeah.
But I mean, we have a new board member in there, I'm just not remembering how this-
So the plan is to have it, hopefully installed by the beginning of June, so we've been going back and forth as far as trying to get something in the schedule, and finding a time in this room where it's not going to be utilized, because it's going to incorporate not only a permanent fixed camera, but also there will be a new, all of the systems over there that function, so from new microphones to that, the little board over by where I sit, that runs like the screen and everything, the screen's going to be gone, the projector system will be gone, there'll be two, I think it's eighty-inch, eighty-inch televisions on each side here, and then there'll be one in the back, so people in the back will be able to view it. The way the system will work is, so that basically, with almost like one touch, I can turn on the, the camera to record, and so there won't, and because it's just one camera, it's just going to be a static screenshot the whole time, so there won't, like, currently we have the different views, so this will just be a one screenshot, but it will also give us the opportunity, if we want, to be able to incorporate what's on the screens, so that people at home have a better view of what's actually shared with the PowerPoints. We'll see how complicated that is, though, because, because we're not going to have anybody helping us anymore, we won't have anybody, anybody, any technical assistance anymore, so really, it's just going to be me trying to run everything from over there. So we'll see just, you know, how much work some of that stuff takes, but that's the, what's going to be installed.
Where do we handle with the microphone situation?
So I think we are looking at mics, so that, that you would have to press it to turn it on, and part of that is just to help get people to recall that you need to kind of speak into the microphone, to help with our closed captioning, because that's really critical, is that part of what we're required under ADA compliance, and so by making sure people are speaking into a microphone, when it's their turn to speak.
Will the film still be delayed before it's posted, or will people watch live?
It's, no, it's still going to be delayed, and part of that is, is that, we have to figure that out yet, but it's going to be saved somewhere on our server. Dean at CISO Seven will still capture that then, he's then going to add all the graphics, like we do now with the board pictures and all that stuff, and then he's also going to do all the closed captioning yet for it. So there'll still be, I believe you, we shared with you the contract that Dean had provided, that basically said that there's, he gave a, kind of a timeline of when we can expect the videos to be done, and part of that, again, is just kind of depending on how long the meetings are.
Thanks, thanks for that question, Amanda.
Thank you.
Any else? Okay. I have no items under human resources, and then we have one item for setting future agendas.
Yeah, and Dr. Langenfeld wants to speak to that, I could, our policy lays out the collaborative working with, setting agendas, and she has a document she wanted to go through with us.
This is a draft, it's called a guiding change document, and I think one of the things that it's intended to do is really provide, as we set agendas, clarity and focus around the work, and really bring forward a clear understanding. I think one of the things that staff has really struggled with is really making sure we hit the mark for the board, from the perspective of the topic comes through the board president, sometimes we don't even know what questions the board wants asked, we don't know if it's a question of the board as the whole. And I, I appreciated your comment tonight, Eric, about the fact that you could see how much work goes into the report that was given, but a tremendous amount of work goes into reports. So what I did is, in the guiding change document, you really are looking at, what's your current reality, and so within that first frame, you'll see what our policy really focuses in on, and then what kind of external influences determine why we need to look at this. So our policy really affords the opportunity for board president and superintendent to be able to prepare and set the agenda. Obviously, and I brought with, and I'm not going to post it or anything, but our, our teaching and learning department's organizational support, we calendar out the work. Much of it has to do with alignment around state statute, sometimes it's in timely reports that go on, you know, month by month, and everything is calendared out. Some things have to be in front of the board, just as Andrea's discussion tonight on AGR at, in certain timing. So that being the case, when, when the items did come forward, and I know there's been, and that's why we're having this discussion, one of the reasons is recognizing that, as we look at these items that come forward in requests, we always look to see if they're in alignment with the board's priorities, beliefs, mission, and so forth, and then also take into consideration, you know, tonight, tonight, we're not, we're hopefully going to wrap relatively soon, so we won't go as long as we did the other night, but wanting to make sure that, that we have the important time that's needed for agenda items. So that being the case, you know, talking a little bit about looking at what our, our current policy really focuses in on, what I would like us to think about is what the concerns are, and why we'd even consider doing something a little bit different. Individual board members obviously can, and, and will be making requests to get them on the calendar, but sometimes they've been delayed, which clearly have been voiced as frustration about not getting them on the calendar. And I think we try to be very responsive as an administrative team and staff to be to your requests, but we don't always have the coherence and clarity in terms of what you want to see. Sometimes we have so many things on the agenda, and the preparation is underway for different reports already, so what would be really helpful, at least as we move forward, is that we go back to what the policy says, and, and think about making sure that, that consideration, look at the alignment, consideration be given to the board as a whole, is this a, something that people want moved up, and something else moved, we're good with that, we just need to know. Consideration be given to the scope of the request, you know, just as Gwen, Gwen had a request tonight, sometimes the scope is large, sometimes small, so thinking about what that looks like, and then looking more specifically at timing and so forth, and making sure that we have a very clear understanding of what the expectations are. Sometimes we have a topic, but we don't always know what, you know, topics are very broad sometimes, and we want to make sure that we are responsive to your requests. That's really the intention. So one of the thoughts that, that I had as we look forward, and the governance question that I'm thinking about that would be very helpful to be answered, is, you know, what is that process that the Board of Education will use to determine the inclusion and placement of requested items on future board agendas? And I think one of the pieces that I would ask is that we would like to make sure it's responsive to your needs, so that you're able to conduct your business, that it's aligned to your priorities, that the, the entire board has the opportunity to determine where and how this particular item is placed, so that we are able to deliver to the board of, as the whole, and then really looking and consider, so for example, if something came forward at this work session, that, you know, here's, anybody obviously can, can ask for an item, that we would talk about what's currently in the queue on the calendars, and then maybe look together at where that would fit, because it doesn't seem to be working the way we currently are doing it. And so I think, so for, what I'm looking for is clarity. And so, I think, so for, what I'm looking for is clarity. I, I, I have to share with you that sometimes we've walked away, and I've sat at this side of the table and watched staff struggle and feel that they're missing the mark, and they've worked really hard on the report, so we really wanna be responsive. So, the more clarity we can have around the, the respective reports, the more if, if your priority is you wanna move something that's on the docket, we could share with you, well, that's required by state statute, or we could say, you know, yep, we could move that, as long as it's the board, the board's priority to move a certain item, to have another item heard first. That's all. It's around capacity, it's around trying to be responsive, it's around not wanting to sit at that side of the table and, and either have the wrong information or not the right information, and that's happened. So, we wanna, we wanna avoid that in the future.
And I think that a lot of those feelings have been felt by board members themselves, feeling like we're trying to move things forward and, and trying to understand how the pro, this is really helpful. I mean, when I started, I had, I mean, other than, you know, just the bare bones of the policy and two, and it was like shooting from the hip in terms of what this means and how you get it on and how you move things forward. So, that frustration, I think, is being felt by many people, and that means that collectively we can be doing a better process. I think, exactly to your point, too, about time and capacity, and I'll just use this example, because I know this is why this came forward with the wellness policy piece. Everybody is very busy, and so you wanna ensure that the things that you're working on are going to be advanced and not just talked about, just to talk about it. That doesn't do anybody any good. So, I think, all the things you're saying resonate, I think, with, at least with me, and I would imagine with other school board members as well.
Thank you, and, and it was, that was one piece, but again, also having staff prepare things that weren't hitting what you wanted to hear, and, and working real hard on those things as well. So, just wanting to make sure we all move together.
Everybody's working really hard, and we can be working more efficiently.
Exactly. Thank you.
I have a question. Go ahead. No, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think this, our conversation goes back full circle, to, you know, going back to the beginning of how do we operate, what are our priorities, and if we get that problem fixed, and then we kind of, the agenda thing will get better, too.
Well, and then, when you look at the calendar, you know.
And not that things won't pop up or, you know, big events that, that we didn't identify, but.
Okay.
That's the only thing I wanted to add.
So, I just want a clarification about, so it says acceptable means the how considerations, and the what, agenda items placed on the Board of Education calendar. So, I'm assuming it means, when it says, agenda items that take into account the decision of the board as a whole. So, when we're sitting here and we have kind of a, yep, let's move that forward thing, that's one thing, because we're in an open session, but then when you look at consideration be given to the board as a whole when considering the disposition of agenda items, so if, so how is this gonna go? If, if one of us says, you know, I wanna cover this topic, can we get this topic on the agenda, and I'm just doing that not sitting at this table, but I'm out of this room, is, I wanna make sure I understand what this means, because you can't create, I can't call up board, all the board members that create a walking quorum, or, you know, how does that work? If I can't do that, because I can't, someone else doing that, is it more like you're taking, are you taking a, a vote on that as a consideration of the whole? What does that, what does that mean?
That was what I wrote in the email, talking about having this as a standing item on our agenda for our work sessions.
Okay, can you?
So, that every month, if there's some, then agenda item that's come up, that, that, you know, in, in, because in working with Dr. Langenfeld and, and looking at the schedule and trying to figure out where it fits, if it, if it, if it doesn't make sense to me, then I would put it on an agenda. If you ask for an agenda item and it ends up on an agenda, we don't have to vote on that.
But I guess what I'm saying is, this, what this does, then, it, it takes into account, then, we're kind of debating whether or not we need it to be noticed publicly in the first place. It is possible we can never get it on an agenda?
No, that's, that's in your policy.
Right, so how does that, well, but how does that separate from the policy versus this? Like, this feels like extra work.
The, what, the difference, the difference, Rhonda, thank you for that, what, what this is intended to do would be, Brenda has suggested that there always be an agenda discussion. So, in other words, you would have an item that you would bring forward, and you would say, I'd like to talk about this. And at that point in time, I would assume we would look at it as, on the calendar, we would decide, and the board would decide, I wouldn't decide, you would look at, and we'd talk about what's already in the queue, you'd talk about, it's no different than when Brenda and I do behind the scenes, but this way it's very transparent, you would look and say, well, could it be, because one of the pieces of the board policy, when I talk about disposition, I'm talking about, if you look at the one, two, three, fourth bullet point down, it, if a, if a board member doesn't get an item placed, a board member, it says, may insist on having an item placed on the next board meeting, agenda for discussion. The board as a whole can decide when the issue in question will be calendared for substantive discussion, so where does it go on the calendar, and/or possible action, and/or refer to administration or committee. So, that's already in policy. What I'm saying is, let's, can we take that out into just a, a larger venue around transparency and have it under what Brenda has proposed as an ongoing. So, you would bring forward, for example, if you wanna talk about truancy tickets, you would come back under the next meeting, under the agenda item, and say, I wanna talk about truancy tickets.
But that's, that's all you can say, though, because you're not supposed to talk about truancy tickets.
Correct.
Right, right.
But you can talk about, but you can talk about, you know.
What you want.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but is it there in a consensus that, yes, we will do that, and we'll do it here or here? Like, how do you see that moving forward?
Yeah, I see us as a board deciding.
We would have to decide that as a board, though, whether or not we would, so it's entirely possible that there would be, so you're taking a vote, in a sense, as a board to put on agenda items. Is that fair?
We're, we're taking a vote to determine how we wanna spend, what's the most productive way to spend our meeting time.
Okay.
And the timeliness of when it goes.
And when it goes on, and, and then also, I think, I think it's also a chance to, to really define when, when you're asking for an agenda item, to say, I want, I'm interested in talking about this, and I want this, this, and this, you know, to be answered, or I, I just wanna cover this aspect of it, or something like that, so that it's very clear to the people that are preparing what it is that.
Sure. No, I get that, I get all that. I'm just wondering how it's, is it like you get, you have two minutes, go, I wanna talk about this, and these are my questions related to this, and is it, okay, everyone, and then when we look forward into our calendar, we decide that, I'm just wondering about the time.
I mean, it may be longer than two minutes. It depends on what the, what the topic is.
Well, the minority rights have to be preserved, and we're not, we're not changing any policy, so the policy also says that the board president does not have the authority to deny a request at all.
I'm just wondering how the board policy goes together with it.
It's a combination of being able to vet out and give them a better idea of what you're looking for and what you're not looking for.
No, I get that part.
The timeliness.
I get that part. I'm just wondering if it's still, if we're still applying the board policy as well.
Yeah.
And actually, we're not even, we're not even changing the board policy. This is just.
Right, I knew that, yeah.
It is the policy, we're just putting it in.
You can't not do the board policy.
It's pretty unlikely that there wouldn't ever, you wouldn't get an agenda item not posted at some point.
Correct.
Well, I think, I think you could, I think you could, the question, and then there's part B, that the, the president can, the president can determine the meeting and, but can't unreasonably withhold a request. So, I, I would assume any meeting request answered theoretically, not that Brenda would do this, but theoretically answered with, yep, let's put that on in seven months, well, wait, it's about summer school this year, yep, seven months, that's when, of course, that, that's clearly forbidden by policy, not that the current president would do that anyways. I think it's, I think it's okay to have this, this topic, as long as we're not creating an expectation that a majority decides what will be discussed, and I don't, I haven't heard anyone saying that.
Can, can I offer, I, I, basically, this, this sort of happened with school start time. When I think about school start time, the topic was suggested as, as an item, we actually put it on the superintendent's report, we talked a, a fair amount about clarification of school start time, and it was from there, it, it didn't stay at this table, it actually went to a larger group and a committee. So, it wasn't solved here, it wasn't, nothing was changed here yet, but it went to a, a different place where people, so it did go to committee is what it, what it ended up doing. And so, instead of having, what, what this affords the board to be able to do is clearly define their priorities, help us as a staff understand what work you want us to do first, and, 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 and it also affords us the ability to hear what you want to see, so that we prepare what you need to make informed decisions about your work.
And all that makes sense. My questions are related to, are we, we're bringing forward something, can't really get into the weeds on it, obviously, for obvious reasons, but is it a matter of, do we look around and make sure, is, are we all good with that, and then, then do we schedule it then, or do we give it, does the board president and vice president still set the time parameter when that's gonna be heard?
No, that's, that's what we say.
It'll be, will we doing that here?
I have a quick question.
But only, but I don't think it'll, and I don't, I don't see it being absolutely everything that goes on our agenda. It would be the.
Something could come up four days after the work session meeting, and the president, vice president, superintendent would still meet weekly, but this would be an additional.
Yeah. Well, or sometimes you may ask for something, and, and it makes total sense because of what else is already on the agenda, to just hook it in with, like we've done in the past, we've hooked it into something else, and covered two topics with one, you know, expanded the topic under the one agenda item. So, I don't see us having to hash out every single thing. It'll just be when they're, when, when I, you know, when, when Michelle and I are talking, go, I'm not sure when this makes sense, because it, it doesn't fit here, it doesn't fit here, you know, maybe we need to do some homework first before we put it on agenda, those kinds of things, where there's potentially people, and that's where your frustrations have been, is, is, you know, the, the delay of, of a couple months to, to get something on an agenda. This will help all of us be clear as to why something took two months to get on, or why something should bump something else and be on in two weeks.
Christina?
I have a very quick question and a comment. In terms of bringing forward agenda items during the session, this is something that we have to share before we could just bring it to the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're not really, right, Melissa?
Right.
Yeah, because we're not making any decisions.
Just clarifying.
You know, and, I mean, any, any board, I mean, we're making a decision on the agenda, but, but.
Okay.
We're not making decisions about the agenda item itself, so then you can just bring them, I mean, if you wanna let.
I could let you know, but it doesn't have to.
Let me know, but it doesn't have to be.
And then the second thing I just wanna just put out there to the vice president and the president of the school board, is that I personally would like more leadership and support on understanding how to move items forward into an actionable phase, because that's kind of where I'm feeling stuck, is like there are things I want to accomplish, things that I want to get done, not because of me, but because of the work, and I need help to understand what that looks like. And so, I am looking to you two, as all my school board, I mean, I look to all of you, but I especially am looking at you two, and I hope this process will help us with that.
Yeah, and I think, in answer to that, there are things that board members, you know, do individually, that move things forward without it necessarily having to go in front of the entire board. So, I think that's the reference in our policy of sending it to a committee or something like that.
But those are the things that I don't know how that works.
Right, right, yeah. So, when you're asking for, for leadership, do you wanna just meet and talk about it, or you wanna talk about it at the?
I mean, I think it's a hybrid. I mean, I think we're having, just bringing it here is a first step, but.
Okay, just kinda ongoing.
I think it's just acknowledging that we have new school board members that wanna get things accomplished, and it's understanding what those are, ensuring that we're supporting each other, so we feel successful.
Yeah, and I think that that, you know, that's kind of why I was thinking that this would be a good idea, because then that'll help.
Yeah, I love it.
Help us all understand.
Keep it at all.
So, we do have one, I don't know if you wanna bring that up, your request, your agenda request, I said we could talk about that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I won't go into big things, we're trying to get out of here, but I, you know, as you guys know, I've been, I started this work in October, you know, our wellness policy drives what we do, and the support of that, you know, enhances learning in the classroom and throughout the school day, before and after the school day. It is a best practice, that's the, by the American School Health Association, the, the National Society for Health and Physical Education Teachers recommends physical edu, or recommends recess, I'm sorry, twenty minutes at least for all elementary K through fifth grade. There are other recommendations for middle school and high school, but I feel like the recess is a piece that is doable. John and I have talked about it, Michelle and I have talked about it, I think it would be a, a good step forward to demonstrate our commitment to physical activity, especially for our littlest ones. Everybody needs physical activity, but especially them, and then also having a conversation around, you know, ensuring that recess isn't used for, or taken away as punishment, Eric and I have kind of talked a little bit about this. And then from the food service side, perhaps some language, just encouraging principals to, if possible, putting recess before lunch, because that's a best practice. When kids have physical activity first, they're more likely to sit down and actually eat their lunch and demonstrate healthy best, healthy behavior. So, I think that's something parents care about. I think it would be, I know it would be a win for our students, but I also believe it'd be something that, you know, parents would be interested in seeing moving forward. So, I've been doing this work, and that's a piece of it that I would like to see us take action on, or at least, you know, consider take, taking action on. Can we discuss this?
We can discuss whether we wanna put it on an agenda, but we can't discuss this.
Can I, can I offer just a bit of?
And can I just ask her one question? No, I just wanna, so are you asking for policy change?
I'm asking for us to consider what would we would, if, if that's something that we're interested in, and what would need to happen to, to implement policy change around recess? So, perhaps if it's doing an assessment of current PA minutes, whatever that entails.
Sure. So, basically, when I, when I talked a little bit about the upcoming progress monitoring report, where we would talk about our cycles of continuous improvement and, and the strategic planning work that would align with the framework, we, we are putting together our annual action plan, and within the annual action plan, we're proposing what are the, what, what is it that we see as some of the big buckets of work that we will focus on for the year, so that we're not doing a wide variety of things? We're trying to, to hit, what, what are the few things that we can do well? And we've divided it into two different categories. One is areas within the focuses of, well, actually, three, three different areas, the areas of academic excellence and personalized pathways, and then within the engagement area, we'll be focusing on equity, engagement, and wellness, and then thriving workforce would be the work of Terry Wilhams, who would be working within the, the HRP. So, so the, we look at wellness as being one of the big bodies of work that we will be focusing on for, for the, the coming year, and so where some, some things seemed that they were, it might have been difficult to see how, how was it fitting in that we were planning to do the work? We wanna build it into the actual annual action plan, so that's seen as, as one of the big components.
So, and when, when are you planning to present that?
I think we can share a little bit during the, the update at the, at the, during the progress monitoring report, but I think it really, to do justice to it, it might be better, we talked about, like, a June retreat, perhaps?
Like a retreat, okay.
Yeah, I would think a retreat, then, the key, the key with this opportunity is making sure that it aligns with the board priorities, because if our, our whole plan doesn't.
Right.
We're not gonna be able to deliver the expectations and, and get the metrics and, and goals that the board is looking for. So, I think that, yeah.
Let me just throw this out there, though. I, I, you know, I get there, there is, there is a natural tension that was set up on purpose a very long time ago between a citizen elected board and professional administrator, and it doesn't have to be an unhealthy tension, but there's a, a give and take here, and I think that sometimes there might be something that we just do that actually doesn't cause, may not necessarily create more administrative time, it might actually save you some. So, for example, I. So for example, I, I would not need, at least for parts of this, I would be prepared to have a discussion and vote on forbidding taking away recess as a punishment. I would need, I could do that with, I would certainly listen to administrators' comments and concerns, but I would not need a presentation to make that decision. I don't think, and then I don't think I would need an extensive presentation about 20 minutes of recess. And that in turn might make other shorter work for you in other areas because the board would have just said, okay, we're saying X, we want to do at least X for recess. I don't want to, I guess I don't, it just sounds like, I don't want this to become something that becomes a discussion that lingers over, over more months, even if the intent behind it is to do good work and get it exactly right.
So our intent wouldn't be to go to, to spend time just on that, but to look at wellness as a broader topic and go deep with it and make sure that we're hitting the, all aspects. But we do, we do sometimes have to think about what are the ripple effects? Like just if we say, like, let's, like, I like the idea, like, let's give recess before lunch. And if we, at the board table, without like going through what the possible effects would be, if we just say all recesses will be before lunch, like I like it right now. But we might find out, actually, there is five schools that we couldn't do that and because of a certain reason.
That's why we would craft languages that would give flexibility. John, I don't think anybody here is saying that all of those things aren't part of the process. But there are things that we can do that are low hanging fruit. Most of our elementary schools, if, and I already, and I said this, I would, if we need to do an assessment, can every elementary school do it? We've talked about this actually, and we were like, oh, probably wouldn't actually be that intensive. That's something we could gather and it wouldn't be a six month project. Most of our elementary schools are, I would imagine, already doing 20 minutes of recess. These are the things that are wins for us.
Yes.
Right? Of course, yes, I, let me finish what I'm saying. Of course, it has to do all of the things you're going to do. But I do think we have to be very careful that we don't get bogged down in the heaviness of all of the things where we can't move things forward that are good wins for kids.
Michelle?
So I'm hearing two things. The scope of the work, the scope of the broader work around wellness. And what, what I'm hearing from you, John, and the work that I know that the team has been doing is a much deeper, broader scope around actually doing some important transformational work over a bigger, a bigger wrap around wellness. The other piece of what I'm hearing is there's, you know, kids not going out and being penalized for, you know, not able to go to recess is a much smaller scope.
Sure.
And so.
It's that policy, practice, feedback. Sometimes practice informs policy because you're doing it, therefore you put it in. Sometimes policy informs the other way, so.
And I think there's room for both.
Absolutely.
Like, I think we can get quick wins with 20 minutes of recess, but that's also go broader and deeper with wellness as a whole.
Of course, it is both, yeah, absolutely.
Great.
So the question on the table is, here's an agenda item request. When does the board want to consider it?
So would it be June?
In two weeks as an isolated policy? Or in June when we're looking at the bigger picture and we pluck out the things that we want to do? And I would offer that, you know, the policy part of it, probably timing wise, you know, if we change policy next week, it's not going to change anything until the next school year anyway.
You would want, whatever you have and whatever is transformed or changed by the time school starts is really.
Right, that was the intention.
Right, and I would, I would want to clarify, and I don't want to get into the discussion, but everybody else is, what our actual policy says, because if the policy actually, actually says 20 minutes of recess, it doesn't.
No. That's the whole thing that I did with the policy assessment.
Okay, okay.
So I scored it.
So the practice is.
And that was one of the things that identified as these are the easy wins that would be good for kids.
Okay, I just didn't want to be.
No, that's okay.
Creating a policy that is already a policy. So I'm trying to avoid that.
I don't want to do that either.
So we can either.
So the June, the June meeting cycle seems appropriate. And if, you know, I can think of one or two specific policy suggestions that might come out of the June work session. If the administration doesn't bring them, someone else might.
Except this is a retreat, I think, just to, that we're talking about, right?
I think, I think that would be.
Sorry, Andrew.
It would afford us the ability to really have some important conversations so we're prepared. In June, it would afford us the work time in the summer so that everything is geared up by the fall.
Sounds good to me.
And I think you'll find that the, some of the areas that we've laid out are really in response to what we hear and patterns we see emerge from, from the conversation with the board, like grading practices and wellness and other factors that we, class size, things that we want, and boundaries work, things that we've heard that we need to make sure that are included. And making sure that they're refined and aligning with your needs will be helpful.
So should we?
Are we doing this every board meeting then?
Just a work session.
So this is a time to lay out some agenda items if we want them?
Yes.
Okay. Can we handle the dress code changes that we talked with InterCity Student Council with?
That's, we're coming, that's coming to the InterCity Student Council meeting.
But when is it coming to the board table?
Actually, they followed up.
No, we did. We met with them.
Yeah. I mean, since we're talking about agenda items.
I'm afraid there's going to be an injury. I watched you several times on that plastic strip.
I think she actually kicked it this time, but that's okay.
But if you fall, you get to go home.
I may get to go home, have a few days off. We met with the leadership of InterCity Student Council. And the plan was, as we had talked, you know, we are all adults and we don't know what they would want to see in changes to the dress code policy. So we asked them to come back with some proposed changes and then we could work on the policy together with InterCity Student Council. We haven't received anything back from the leadership from InterCity Student Council yet on those changes. We, I mean, we, we don't know, as I told them, I'm a 42-year-old woman who doesn't really, can't anticipate what the needs of our kids are with, I mean, I can guess, but this is student-led. And so we want to hear from them before we start making changes.
And when was the last time someone reached out to them?
Well, we had a two or three hour meeting.
Well, we had that one, but then we met, we had a phone conversation.
It was just with the leadership of the InterCity Student Council at West High School.
Two weeks ago, a week ago?
Might be four weeks ago now.
The one we met face to face.
Yeah, at West.
It's quite a while ago. I mean, not nine times by.
But then we had a phone conversation and followed up with this discussion with, with the advisor and talked about this agenda item.
I have my notes from the meeting as to what next steps were, so we were just waiting.
So you're waiting on the?
We're meeting with them.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, a few weeks.
Any thoughts, Noah?
Yeah, where's that at, Noah?
Yeah, that might have been, I could see that pretty much being our fault and not necessarily understanding. But we did talk at our last meeting about the specific things we wanted to see on address code. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's anyone's particular fault that we, they're more clear. I think we'll just, we've got it now. So at the meeting on the 23rd, we'll have more clear, we'll have more clear, kind of more clear like what we're asking for and then we can go from there.
So then that'll follow the?
Thank you.
So then once you have that listed, it'll follow the normal policy process? Yeah, okay.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Maybe there's a plan for this, but do, starting to lay out the process for the next superintendent search and the hiring of a firm? And is there any conversation about that? Just because I know it's going to happen soon.
Yeah, timing wise, I think probably we'll talk about the firm question and hiring of a firm later in the summer. We don't want to get too far out ahead of hiring a superintendent because some of them don't want to be part of that process until, you know, they get closer. So it's not like you want to hire your next superintendent in October and then they're, you know, in a district potentially leading for that long, you know, and everybody knows they're leaving. So, so I, you know, I mean, we want to get ahead, a little bit ahead, but not too far ahead.
I just wondered about like, you know, do we have any community listening sessions going into the, the search process?
That's a whole, a whole process.
They handle all that for us? Okay.
So, yeah, if we, yeah. So anyway, I mean, we can, and if you want to talk about it sooner, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious about the timeline. So I mean, if we think, you know, I don't know, February, you make hire or make an offer, I don't know. Again, maybe my timeline is different than the rest. But then I just start working backwards from there in my mind and just curious what other people think and.
Maybe just like a high level timeline of.
Yeah.
This is the anticipation.
Not even dates.
That might be helpful.
Okay. Well, I mean, dates would be helpful. I mean, I kind of have, in my head, I have the, you know, approximate dates.
But I don't have an idea, yeah.
In terms of, and I was, like I said, based on that, I was going to bring forward the conversation, but I can do that.
Yeah, I guess it's just more a curiosity for.
Sure. I mean, I can just bring the timeline of, you know, what the.
Sure.
Well, and our timeline can be a little bit more spread out. Normally, you know, you, you hear in February and you're hiring somebody in the end of May, and so it's really short.
Will we follow a similar process to the board consultant regarding search firms? We're interviewing a couple or?
It's up to us. I'll just bring what we've done in the past. And then, you know, I feel like we, the work, I mean, you said this too, or Katie maybe said this, the work with our consultant in terms of helping us work well together will help that process go better.
Yeah.
But, but I can just, no, maybe I'll just provide the in written form rather than at a meeting. Otherwise, we'll get into the weeds of talking about it a little bit. But anyway, I'll, I'll get that.
Ultimately, there's a, there would be an agenda item where we accepted someone's, assuming we're using a firm where we formally voted to accept the contract and authorize the money and so forth.
Right, yeah.
Just do this on email to us, right? As far as letting us know the timeline.
The timeline, yeah, yeah. I can just.
And what we've done in the past.
Right, right. Rather than have it as an agenda item.
But is this something we can share if people ask? Because a lot of people are asking about that.
Yeah, you can share what the timeline was.
Andrew, do you want to bring, do you want the trinity ticket to be on an agenda item? Or what do you think about that?
He's thinking about it.
I, I mean, I do, but I'll, I'll look, I'll read the, I'll, I'll look more at the 431 policy first and see what I think about how that, that matches up. I might have some legal questions for Melissa. But again, we're at the point where I think, I feel bad that I didn't push this harder sooner because, you know, it doesn't really affect people yet too much in December and January. But I think, you know, now the school year is done and I missed the mark. So I guess we have, I'm making sure it's right for the start of next school year. Anything else?
I have two quick questions. When are we meeting on the 13th?
What time do we, six or six thirty? Six o'clock.
Okay.
Oh, and then if we're talking about a June retreat, should we get some dates? And then we're talking about a consultant. Should we, should we hold some dates on our calendars? Yes.
It's a rhetorical question.
Could we, well, I mean, I could do it tonight, but I'm thinking, we could also do that next week when we meet on Monday.
Oh, we could, you're right.
Yeah, because then we can like look at our calendars.
They have to be there because they are part of the scheduling.
Yes, you are.
So Mondays are good.
So the 10th and the 24th?
June?
We're sticking to Mondays?
I'm just sleeping right now.
Yeah, because we don't have any left in May because Memorial Day is one of the Mondays.
Right.
Is the 10th going to be too soon? Is that a graduation day?
It's not a graduation day.
Okay. Oh, the last one is the 6th, okay.
I mean, I think if we can just.
It's a school day.
If we need to focus on the end of the school year and do a retreat after school's let out, that would be.
That would be better.
Okay, but can we put, I'm thinking, I'm wondering if we hold June 10th in case we decide to move forward with the consultants and do that work on that night?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody? Yes. Okay. And then why don't we look ahead to the 24th, something?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Does that one work for everybody?
Yeah, you are.
No, we have a retreat with our administrators on the 20th. So if there were major changes to the, if there were major suggested changes to the strategic plan, it would be nice for us to know that ahead of time so that they didn't build their school success plans. Because they build their school success plans interlinked with what we.
So, so John, here's this. If the board meets with the consultant on the?
10th.
10th. And they have looked at our, their priorities have nothing to do with the ones who are planning, then we'll know.
Yep.
I don't think that'll be the first thing we do.
No, but.
And I think we'll see other, you'll, you'll share other iterations.
I would, I would offer that the overall high level strategic priorities kind of look the same all over the country.
Right.
There's a little tweak here, change in language there, but it's really the same thing. It's around achievement for all children. It's around equity and engagement, you know, in a, looks like what we saw tonight.
Very much.
Everyone needs. We should hold the slot at six o'clock for both of those nights.
Or earlier.
Or earlier. And then I, I'm out of town on a video shoot that day, I'm traveling.
What date?
The 10th. Nope, the 24th.
Okay. Does the 10th work for you?
Yep.
Okay, so the 10th we'll put on hold, the 24th, then you will, you won't be back?
They never, it's, no, I may even be gone until Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
What about Wednesday of that week?
Wednesday works.
That would be the 25th?
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth?
That's fine.
Okay.
It's somewhere that, that probably works for staff better too, they left.
So the 10th and the 26th.
Does Tuesday work?
No, because she's.
But she might not be back.
Oh, you won't be back Tuesday either?
I don't know. It just depends on how it was Monday.
For Thursday, I got something on Wednesday.
Tuesday works.
Twenty-seventh?
I have kind of Mondays and Tuesdays reserved. I'll do my best on a Thursday.
How about a Wednesday?
I got something on the 26th. But what about the week before, the 19th?
That works for me.
I'm, I can't, I'm not available on the 19th. All right. All right, well, let's, let's hold June 10th and we'll, we can look at more dates on the 13th. Maybe you guys can just give me, because we talked about in the summertime, trying to, when we have reports, trying to have a second meeting the same week as our board meeting. Because of vacations, people tend not to take vacations the week of a board meeting. So that's another thing to look at too, right? Are you still interested in doing it that way?
But I'm sorry.
But having the.
No, I'm, I'm watching what's going here and I'm concerned about my staff.
No, we're good. We're just converging on.
Because I know we had a rough start of the evening, so I'm just trying to figure out where people are at.
Sorry.
Taking a pulse. I'm sorry.
The, last summer, we tried to have our retreats the same week as a board meeting.
Oh.
So that people are less likely to be on vacation the week of a board meeting.
That's always good.
So we'll look next week on Monday and look at some more dates. So, all right, everything, anything else? Entertaining a motion for adjournment? All in favor?
I oppose adjournment.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.